Everyone, welcome to this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Here.
Councilmember Kostic?
Here.
Councilmember Simmons?
As it.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Cersei?
Here.
Great, looking at our agenda moving forward next week on Wednesday, March 17th. We have meet-out day proclamation for the record. Then we will get our legislative update and then have our voting session next week, which will include the second reading ordinance for traffic calming on the 8,000 block of Wildwood Drive, and also second reading ordinance for traffic calming on Darwin Avenue. We will have our resolution regarding stormwater management and the first reading ordinance amending the stormwater management code. Our work session next week will include the Police Department annual report and a continued discussion of committees. We will focus on proposal appropriate, excuse me, purpose and changes, charges of committees next week. Then on Wednesday, March 24th, we'll have a, we'll begin our meeting with a presentation of the minor master plan process and memorandum of agreement between Montgomery County Planning Board and the City of Tacoma Park. This includes the area that is Washington Adventist University, the former campus of Washington Adventist Hospital, along Maple Avenue up to the community center at 7,500 Maple Avenue. Our voting session on the 24th will be the second reading ordinance amending the stormwater management code. Our work sessions that evening will include code enforcement update, a pre-budget briefing on vehicle replacements, technology, recreation department plans, and preparations for redistricting. We will not hold the meeting on Wednesday, March 31st. Our next meeting then will be on April 7th, and that will be the night, it's here, the presentation of the FY 2022 recommended budget. April came by fast. Our work session that night after the presentation of the budget will be a continued discussion of committees and update of the city manager search and update on the reimagining public safety task force. So those are our upcoming agenda. Next, we will have our, let's see, is Anne with us? For our legislative update, she is, Anne is here, we will get a legislative update.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As we speak, the House of Delegates is meeting and debating the police reform bill. Last week, the Senate of Maryland passed out a number of bills addressing a number of areas. I mentioned it. The House has now passed out a committee and is debating on the second reader, a one omnibus bill that encompasses all of the pieces that had been individually passed in the Senate. They will be debating this for a little while yet tonight, and then I'm going to guess some tomorrow as well. And, and then there'll be a lot of time spent in a conference committee, members of the House, members of the Senate, trying to work out all the differences. And the story is no different than, than last week, last week's report, which is that a lot of the, you know, the coalitions that have been working on police reform and accountability are not pleased with as far as some of those changes go or proposed to go. So that's what some of the amendments, some of the amendments being debated are to strengthen the bill from that perspective and others are to weaken it. So we'll see where it all ends up. There's a lot of other movements going on because we're coming up on what's called crossover on Monday, the 22nd. It's the crossover deadline, which is when House bills need to be in the Senate and Senate bills need to be in the House in order for those bills to not have other barriers towards success. And so that just means there's a lot of voting going on right now. And so there are voting sessions all day, every day. And there are voting sessions going on in the House and Senate as well. There are a lot of bills that the city is supportive of and have as priorities that are passing. Today, one of the big fights on the House floor earlier when they were in was the passage of the plastic bag ban. It still has not moved out of committee in the Senate, but it is through the House now. The climate change bill, that is a very significant effort toward reducing emissions over a number of years, sets different goals for different decades, and it is moving, it has passed the Senate. And, well, it's expected to come out of the House as well. The Community Choice Energy Pilot Program from Montgomery County passed the House and has been assigned in the Senate. The stormwater management bill to update how the state calculates and makes, makes policy decisions related to stormwater management, has passed the House and the Senate, different bills, so they have to go through the same process on either side, but that seems to be moving quite well. And then we also have, in the same posture, a Senate bill and a House bill passed, you'll recall, the city weighed in on a bill to do tree replacement along the purple line. The bill's actually been expanded to apply to all transportation projects. So we think that's a good change. So those are the highlights for tonight. Folks have any questions? Oh, on housing, I'm sorry, housing I know is another big topic. That just today, two, two bills were passed out of the House Committee. Last night, it passed one committee, was jointly assigned to two committees. Today, it passed through the other committee, and these are bills, one of which is Delegate Janelle Wilkins Emergency Response Bill, which has been significantly reduced in, in the scope of what it was intended to do. But it, it will codify the existing limits on evictions that the governor has had for the last year. And then there's another bill to try to create some additional notice before people end up, there's notice of delinquency before getting, before eviction can be filed for. So, so there are some advances that are going to happen. They're not, I think, as, much like police reform, they're not as significant, I think, as a lot of folks wanted to have, but there are going to be new things in place to help tenants.
Great, any questions? Right? All right, not seeing any, I'm sure Anne, you can go back and listen to more debate and hearings.
I, I do believe I see the Delegate Moon is on the floor speaking, so I'll go find out what he's speaking about.
Great, go do that, thank you very much.
Thanks, all.
Have a good evening. All right, terrific. So the next thing we have up tonight is we have a presentation from the Complete Safe Streets Committee on their recommendations on traffic calming, traffic calming and sidewalks. And I believe, am I turning it over to Ms. Landman now? Yep, okay, I don't know if there are other members of the, the committee who have joined us tonight, but you can recognize them if they have.
Yes, I do want to recognize Emmanuel Wagner, co-chair, and David Cookson, who has been very instrumental in putting this together. Thanks for the time tonight, and I will try and be brief and happy to answer questions. And I'm grateful that my two fellow committee members are here because they may be able to better answer some of the tech questions if they get technical. So I gave a brief PowerPoint presentation to Jessie. If you want to put it up on the screen, Jessie?
I will, give me just a moment.
Okay, thank you. And while she's doing that, I'll just say that we are, we are interested in what's happening with the speed limit bill. If you guys have any news on that, that was something we had spoken with you about.
Okay, are you seeing it now?
I do, thank you.
Good, good, good.
So if you could just go to slide number two? So what I tried to, first, I wanted just to make sure that Jessie circulated with all of you the more detailed document that this is an effort to summarize so that we, so that I'm not going to go over this in great detail, but I want to make sure you have that in hand because I'm going to talk about stuff that we, that we're summarizing here, but that is spelled out in the, I guess it's about maybe 10 or 15-page-long document that goes into more detail. So I think Jessie passed that around a week or two ago so that you would have a chance to look it over ahead of time if you wanted. So first of all, just let me recap how we got to where we are today, which was that we were asked initially to take a look at the two ordinances for requesting traffic calming or sidewalk installation to see if they could be made more consistent and sort of more available and user-friendly, if you will. And the first set of recommendations that we made to you were the ones that are summarized here, to make it easier for residents to trigger a needs assessment so that the petitioning process should be either done away with or greatly simplified so that the public could request an assessment readily without having to, say, collect a lot of signatures. But then also to make the process of deciding what to do with that initiated assessment, one that was going to be more transparent, more evidence-based, and more equitable, and also based on the city's new focus on this issue, which we welcome, to make it an effort not only to be transparent, but for you to make a special effort to make up for any past deficiencies in the equity, to make sure that it wasn't just the squeaky wheel who got the grease, but it was the places where you needed the sidewalks the most. My screen is doing odd things right now. Other people?
Yeah, I am sorry, is it, can you see now? It should be on the, the second slide. Where are you seeing it?
You're seeing, you're, we're in presenter, you're in presenter mode. Jessie, do you have two monitors up?
I do.
I think you need to, you need to switch your monitors, we're seeing.
I'm sorry, okay.
It happens literally all the time.
Give me just a minute to sort that out.
To do this so that the mistakes that would be inevitably would be hers rather than mine, because I knew I would make them inevitably.
Yeah, well, I'm making them for you, so there we go.
Thank you for doing the work for me.
Yeah, so give me just a minute here, I'm gonna.
It's still possible for people to read this, so I'll just go ahead. So basically, what we recommended was that, go back one slide, that there be a transparent process and that the process be based on evidence, meaning that you would use actual data available to you, and that you would spell out in advance what criteria you would be using so that if people were making an application, they would be able to see what you were going to be judging that application based on, and they could make those points in any requests that they made. And then that, that you would do so in a way that in case you make the determination, the professional staff using those criteria, that you're not going to go forward with something that was requested, you'd also have a reason for saying no. So Casey, I believe it was, made the special request to us that we go back and, and provide additional guidance on what criteria you ought to use. So that is what we're here to really focus on this evening. Next slide, please. I know that's mean, you just got to this slide, but could you move us to the next? So the first thing that, and I wanted to also say that we, we conferred with city staff professionals with the young woman who did a great job leading our committee, who has taken off for DC, and then in her place Roz and, and, sorry, DPW, Daryl has also been very helpful to us. So the first thing we discovered was that there is no current inventory of where the sidewalks are in the city. The last time that an inventory was done was when the Tool Design Group did an assessment of where you had ADA issues. That, that inventory document, which is an appendix in the longer document that we gave you, is a very helpful thing to have on hand. It tells you where there are sidewalks and where there are none. And there is, and it's not a big deal to update it, but it would be a great visual aid for you or anyone who comes after you to see where the gaps are. And so, among other things, just a visual glance at that tells you where the gaps are ward-wise. And at the time that it was done, there was a significant deficiency of sidewalks in Ward 5 and 6. And now, according to what Daryl knows off the top of her head, a lot of those deficiencies have been addressed in the, in the meantime, but to be able to have a visual assessment that you can just glance at and see, and you probably know your own wards well, it would be very helpful. Similarly, there is absolutely no map right now of where traffic calming installations have been put. And so we recommend that you create a map like that so that you can see where the speed humps are, where the bump outs are, which, whether they are, you know, evenly distributed in, around the city, the way that you would want them to be, and where the gaps are. Once you have those maps, it should be relatively easy for you to, for you and city staff to overlay on those maps where requests are pending. And we also recommend that you have an overlay, not only for where residents have requested traffic calming or sidewalks, but where your own city staff expert advice recommends that those things go. That information should be readily available on the city's website. It is a really good visual cue to whether services are being distributed equitably around town. The other thing that we recommended is that you use this set of criteria, I'm going to touch on in a minute, to make your decisions, but that you also only go into a detailed assessment for prioritizing those decisions in the years when you have more requests than you have budget for, because it can be time-consuming to prioritize six proposals. If all six proposals are fundable in a given year, then don't bother. Just make a determination if they are, in fact, requests you think professional, your professional staff thinks should be fulfilled, and then if they are, then don't bother with prioritization. So then, if I could have the next page, please? What we looked to was, as I said, that you have criteria that are known ahead of time, that are readily assessable, and that they're available to the city staff. We suggested criteria that be, that are ones that draw from the professional recommendations from the Tool Design Report, which you have in this longer document, and there's a list there of what the categories are, a more detailed explanation of what we mean by those, by those simple key words is in the document. And we suggested that you have, for purposes of making decisions on prioritization, a way to weight those criteria, giving more weight to the criteria that you want to emphasize. Our recommendation is that the set of emphases and weighting criteria that, that were proposed for, by Tool Design when you were looking at ADA compliance, be altered to be more cognizant of the city's current focus on racial equity and equitable distribution of city services. And those weighting criteria are spelled out in the longer document. Okay, I think, is that, yeah, I think that's the last slide that I had, and I have my colleagues here. If you, if anybody has questions about how the weighting recommendations in the longer document are spelled out, let me know. And what we hope to learn from you today is whether there's anything further you would want from this committee after tonight on this topic or not, and we're happy, we're happy to answer any of your questions. Emmanuel is now on the screen, and so is David, my partners in crime.
Great, thank you, Jessica.
Emmanuel is somewhere, I don't know where he is, but he looks like he's in the great outdoors and it's bright sunlight, so.
I do want to be, yeah, Jessica, thank you so much for all of that. I don't have anything to add, that was a wonderful, you know, whirlwind walkthrough of everything we've discussed over the last year or so, I don't even know how long, but thank you for very speedy summary, so I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Great. David, do you have anything to add before I turn to council?
No, I don't, that was really good, thanks.
Great, let's see, first up, we have Councilmember Smith, then Kostic.
I just want to first say thank you for the presentation. I, I like the direction that you guys are going. Couple of questions, one, what happens when residents do not like the direction of, whether it's a traffic calming proposal or installation of new sidewalks? Do you guys have a new procedure to resolve these type of issues?
We have recommendations for how public outreach is conducted, and we suggest that you undertake a more fulsome way of communicating with people about proposals. Not that people, like, right now, the onus to move ahead with a sidewalk installation really starts with the residents on a street. They have to go gather a lot of signatures, you know, for a lot of people who have, who may have language or other kinds of barriers, mobility barriers, it's a pretty significant barrier, and we want to reduce those barriers, but then we also recommend that you empower city staff to assess recommended, or requests, and have a reason for saying yes or no. And you may have, city staff may say, you know, the neighbors on this street may not want a sidewalk, but a sidewalk is really needed for safety, they should have a basis for being able to make that case. So we're recommending that there be more public outreach and meetings with the affected residents, including notifications in various languages, using social media, placing signs and evidence on the spot where the change would be, would be effectuated so that they can, people who don't, who aren't on social media or whatever, can see a sign saying change is coming. I don't think we have an answer for the question, what do you do when there's one holdout on the street who doesn't want a sidewalk? If it's in a public right-of-way, we would like the city to be able to, you know, impose the will of the safety folks on the, on the process, and we, and, and other than that, and hope you get reelected afterwards. We, we did though, think that, that people should not, you shouldn't assume that every request has to be granted and that, and I mean, some of, you know, what we heard from Daryl, based on her many years of experience, was that sometimes one person, you know, will stand in the way on a given block to putting in a sidewalk, and, and that doesn't seem right to us if it's a public right-of-way. And, you know, if there's issues with condemnation, like there might be, for example, on 410, where we know a lot of people want a sidewalk, but apparently there's one piece of land that's privately owned, we want the city to be proactive in trying to resolve those things and put in sidewalks where they're needed.
Thank you. Another question, I like the way you came up with the ways to weight different categories, I think that's very good. I just want to make sure that when, let's say, a sidewalk on Flower Avenue, if going through this process, it scores at a high level, does that automatically mean, in, in what you guys interpreted doing this report, that it should get funding? Or does that, or is that decision done at a different level?
Well, what we recommended was that you, whatever budget that you do have for doing those things, that you prioritize them based on a variety of weighting factors, but there's a special separate factor for weighting things on the basis of their affordability. So you might be able to do 10 things that are minor in, or one thing that's major in terms of the cost, but the impact for all of these different installations could be, you know, it could make it better to do the nine cheap things than the one expensive thing. So by giving you a way to weight the costs, we're trying to help prioritize, but, I mean, in terms of always know if it gets a good, a high score that it should be funded, I, I don't think we can answer that, especially because some of the things probably that are the most important in terms of their safety implications would also be the most expensive. That's just a guess, but you know, if you need to put in a sidewalk where there is none, that could be a lot more expensive than, you know, one of putting a speed hump in.
I just want to make sure that we can, you know, reach our equity goals, right? Because equity goals are, are expensive a lot of times, right? And so I want to try to take out some of the subjective decision-making, and how do we get to, okay, we're going to do XYZ, and because it makes sense going through this process that you guys have laid out, but thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation.
The equity issue is one that you can effectuate better by giving it a higher weight in the weighting system, and we would encourage you to do that. That's something that the city council would have to do as a policy decision, but you can give those instructions then to DPW. Can I just add one thing I forgot to mention? We initially said, for this to be evidence-based, we wanted you to be able to consult with information, which data, data that you collected on accidents, so that places where accidents were prevalent would be, would get additional attention. What we discovered with the help of Daryl and, and others, including the Police Department that we consulted, that you don't have that data, because right now, it's not collected at all, unless it's an accident with a serious injury or something like that, there's no data collection of that. So you're going to have to rely on anecdotal evidence from the Police Department based on what they see at data. there's no data collection of that. So you're going to have to rely on anecdotal evidence from the police department based on what they see day to day or the handful of places where you know where, where the serious accidents are. And those, by the way, are all on state roads, you know, so it's like New Hampshire Avenue, Piney, the, the obvious places. But for, for more information about where the fender benders are, you have no database on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great. Councilman Kostick.
Thank you very much for the presentation and all your hard work on this. I think this is really moving us in a good direction, and I really appreciate all the attention you all have given to this. I just have a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. One is just to reiterate what you said before, which is that the process is pretty overwhelming and very confusing, I think, right now. I hear from residents regularly who want to make a request and just don't even really know how how to start or where to start. And I think the information, the process itself is confusing, and then the information that's out there is also confusing. So I really think we need to work through that as well as actually making the systemic changes. It seems like there's two separate things that kind of need to be better communicated to people and restructured. Um, you talked about the, the inventory of sidewalks and traffic calming, which I think is a fantastic idea. Um, I'm curious sort of how big of a project you foresee that as? Is that something that you think could be done sort of on a volunteer basis, or an intern could work on it? Or is it something where we really might have to work with a consultant or have a staff member do it? How big are you envisioning that being?
Well, Jamie, before she left, estimated that updating your existing maps would be about the equivalent of a week's worth of work for somebody who was familiar with GIS. My guess is that the, that the tool design folks who did the initial map, which bear in mind was mapping something different. It was actually mapping ADA compliance of sidewalks as opposed to focusing strictly on the existence or nonexistence of them. But they're both pieces of information you want. I would consider going back to them and asking what it would cost for them to do it. It could be a relatively minor expense. Yeah, an intern, a GIS knowledgeable intern could probably do it, but I think that would be something that, you know, Daryl could give you more details, but we did ask Jamie, who was GIS proficient, and that's what her estimate was.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be really valuable, and I would be interested in, in us trying to find out more about how much that would cost. Um, I also wondered, because one of the things that we have been doing when people put in a request, and I'm sorry if you had this in the report and I missed it. But one of the things we have been doing is having a speed count and, and traffic count and speed measurements taken. Is that something that you think we should continue to do? And might we have some option of incorporating that into an inventory as well to kind of consider, you know, streets that have greater volume or lesser volume or speed?
I think it could be incorporated in here because one of the, we looking at different things like the, like where traffic and school, routes to school intersect, for example. I will say, though, I benefited from visiting one meeting that the mayor and I, I want to say Cindy were having with residents who wanted to have an installation on their street, which will remain nameless because I can't remember which street it was, and it's probably dust, but they had gone to a great deal of trouble to gather data about how fast cars are going and how many cars are going there. And the police department presented their data and the people who did, who wanted the traffic calming were absolutely uninterested in the facts as presented in the data. So it's only worth doing if you then empower yourselves to say no when the data merit saying no. That's my personal opinion because it's a waste of money. If you're gonna do it anyway, regardless of what the data say, then don't invest in additional data gathering. But I mean, in an ideal world, we recommend an evidence based decision. And, and you know, I think that in a world where equity is a priority, it should be evidence based.
Yeah, thank you. I, that's, that's sort of how I feel about the, the current request that we have before us, which I think make a lot of sense. And I would normally really have wanted to see data, but I, I think in this case, it doesn't make sense to necessarily push for that because because it's COVID and also because, as you noted, we were pretty certain we're going to move forward with those anyway. Um, I mean, in my ideal world, I would love to have a situation where we had really very minimal requests coming in because we had a list already that was fairly prioritized that said, here are the places where we need to work towards putting in sidewalks and traffic calming because we know there are issues. And I think maybe that's a little easier with sidewalks because we know that in general, most streets should have a sidewalk, whereas maybe in general, most streets don't necessarily need traffic calming. I think that's maybe a little, a little trickier, but I'm curious whether the, the criteria that you came up with, which I think are really helpful. And thank you very much for putting that together. I'm curious whether you see that as just evaluating requests, or if that could also be something that might be used. Sort of a staff might go through a larger list of just locations that don't have sidewalks or don't have traffic calming kind of in general.
Well, first of all, when we, when we discussed in detail like where, what the current lay of the land is with Daryl, we learned that the, that the old inventory of where sidewalks are missing, many of those have been filled in in the meantime. So there may be a relatively small set of places where this remains relevant. Those of you who have places in your ward probably, probably know better than we do where they are, but they, it may not be that many. And so Daryl's assessment of the current, you know, list of pending ones was that the current budget covers them all. Now, I don't know how, whether they're still rolling in with the same frequency that they used to, but it's, it's a very relevant question whether there really is a huge inventory of remaining need or not. And I think once you have an assessment of the current situation, you're going to be in a much better position to guess than to do an educated guess. And I, I do, I do think we were very specific that there should be a way for staff, not only residents, but staff to request that, that projects get on the priority list based on the same criteria and based on their knowledge of where the problems are.
Thank you. Just two more quick things. One, and I think Councilmember Smith addressed this a bit in terms of of people maybe opposing something or specifically requesting it. But one of the things that I see happening a lot is where people on one street want traffic calming, and then people on another street don't want them to get traffic calming because they themselves will then experience the traffic moving over there. And in some cases, the, the people on another street might actually not be able to request traffic calming because it's, you know, a state highway, or maybe it's a thoroughfare like Lincoln Avenue, for example, which is a main thoroughfare for emergency vehicles. And I'm curious, you know, in terms of like the holistic approach, I know you mentioned in the report, I think that's a really important aspect. Would you foresee getting input from people from all of the potentially affected streets when you're going through the process with, with a possible traffic calming request? And how do you kind of balance that out, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I think Daryl should turn her camera on so you can see her going like this. Because what we learned in speaking with her is that even though we, we do still recommend a holistic approach that looks at the surrounding streets and if possible, thinks about that whole, the picture holistically, just as you're recommending, that her experience has been that when you do that, you, the result is nothing happens because it does exactly. It squeezes the balloon in one place and it lobs out in another. So I, I don't think we were very helpful to you in developing criteria that specifically address that. But if one, if solving one safety problem creates a safety problem in another location, then that needs to be part of the safety assessment. And I don't exactly know how to do that, but maybe there needs to be a criterion for a spillover effect or something, which we should have included. But Daryl may have something to say about this because she's the one who's stuck trying to mediate when that happens right now.
That makes a lot of sense. Daryl, do you have any thoughts on that or suggestions?
Just in general, I want to add my thanks to the Safe Roadways Committee. They've done just an excellent job. And I think the documents both tonight, as well as their prior documents, were, will be really helpful tools in moving our process along. It is, it goes without saying that the broader approach you take to whether it's traffic calming or pedestrian safety, it does bring in many more issues and makes it very difficult to move a project along. It's oftentimes the death knell for, for a project because it's difficult enough to get one block or adjacent blocks to agree on something when you start getting intersecting streets and adjacent neighborhoods. It sometimes leads to paralysis. So I don't have a solution there for you, though, though I do think what Jessica said is, is imperative, which is if traffic calming on one street creates traffic, traffic problems on another street, then we need to address those in turn. The challenge, of course, is that we can have that control over our residential streets, but we can't over the state highways. And that's really, I think, where you're, where you're going to find most traffic issues. And in fact, that's what those streets are designed for, to carry the broader load of traffic and particularly traffic going through the city. So, you know, we'll just continue our work with state highway where we can, but to the degree that we combine neighborhood efforts, it does tend to make it a more difficult process to move through and get agreement.
Thank you. Just one more thing I had noticed in your presentation, and you alluded it to it tonight, that there was still an ongoing issue with the data for crashes in the county system. And I had thought that that was something we had resolved previously. So I wondered if maybe Ms. Liddler staff could look into that and, and make sure that our, our data is being collected and reported with the county data.
I may have, I may have misled you there, Casey, because I was talking about something a little bit different, which is that with respect to whether the city data is loaded into the county system, I don't have the answer to whether that has been fixed. But this was with respect to sort of fender benders. And what we learned was that simply data are not collected at all on that, not by the city, not by the county, not by anybody. So, um, you know, you, there's nowhere to, there's, it's not a county versus Tacoma Park issue. It's a lack of data collection.
There's also, there's also just a real encouragement for people not to report them. Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost the advice that you don't report them. So if you're trying to get that information about the, the smaller fender benders, it's very difficult. Nevertheless, there are things that don't necessarily apply into Tacoma Park, but that's where the concept of the, the small circles around abouts are often seen as more, as, as safer intersections because you do have fewer of those as well. So.
So just one example of where the lack of data on this struck us as really significant is like at the corner at Holly where the crosswalk, the crossing guards are, where, I mean, people are not getting into necessarily killer accidents there, but there, you know, every parent of a school child who crosses there can tell you a horror story about a near miss there. And, you know, we don't know how something like that is just not going to be reflected in the data that are collected.
Yeah, and we recently requested data on the Carol Avenue and Lincoln Avenue intersection, which has had an ongoing issue. And it's, it's very similar. I mean, I live a few houses away and all of the neighbors here can all attest to the fact that we hear screeching of tires and, and fender vendors frequently, but we just don't have the data. So I think that's a good point. Great. Well, thank you very much. I look forward to our next steps on this, and I think this is really useful information.
Councilwoman Searcy.
Great. So I want to echo my colleagues and my appreciation of all of the hard work that you all put in. The report is great. The weighting, all of the recommendations make sense to me. Particularly as it relates to insurance equity, I think, you know, you all raised the most salient point is that right now we put the onus on the residents to organize themselves to, first to identify a problem, to organize themselves, to convince their neighbors that it is a problem enough to sign on, and then actually identify what a potential solution might be, because that is something that you also need to check a box on, on that, on that form. So I think what you all are proposing makes sense in terms of, you know, allowing staff to do what they're being paid to do and make recommendations on places that need traffic calming. And then focus more on just engaging the community around potential solutions, which I think is important. Did, did you all talk at all about reassessing traffic calming that has been put in place over time? And I bring that up because I, I live on Wildwood Drive, where we'll talk about a traffic calming device on my block. And there were a lot of circles that were put into place. There were a lot of traffic calming devices that have been put into place, kind of in a bit of a piecemeal, but also holistically. But traffic patterns currently around the purple line have really impacted volume, right? And so even while walking my dog today, those circles may seem great in theory, but they are hazardous for pedestrians, right? You have cars coming in all these different directions and there's no crosswalk for you. So has there been any thought or did the committee talk about the needs for perhaps identifying criteria to trigger a reassessment of traffic calming that has already been installed? To assess whether or not it's still effective, does it make sense to keep? Or is that something that would still fall? Because I, I know one of the things that we, we might hear is, oh, well, we have traffic. You all already have traffic calming in place. What are you talking about? And residents are like, well, yeah, you put a speed bump here, but I still have 50 cars coming through every hour. So it's, and it's not slowing them down. So did you all talk about that at all and whether or not there needs to be some, some way to kind of assess that as well?
You know, that issue did not come up, but it strikes me that the same standards could easily be applied. What you're, what it sounds like you're describing is a situation where you have traffic calming that is actually not calming traffic or not sufficiently. So the same safety assessment of whether, you know, the, the speed that cars are going by, and then all of the other factors, like whether there are a lot of pedestrians, whether it's on a route to school, et cetera, et cetera, superimposed on that, sounds like something that it would also rise to the, to the level of, you know, needing an intervention. As for taking out things that are already there, I guess that would be another form of traffic calming that isn't necessarily on the list of ones that we thought that the city might want to employ, but maybe it is something that you, that you do where you take out a speed hump and you put in a traffic light or something. I don't know. But anyway, I, I think you could use the same criteria in the circumstances you're describing. And by the way, you know, two years ago, when this process began, we had heard from you that you wanted to have sort of a purple line impact assessment done. And, you know, this committee is, you know, interested in hearing from members of the council about, you know, what are your priorities going forward? So at the end of this conversation, I know you're planning to talk about the futures of committees, but you know, our committee is, I'm sort of diverging to, to point out that we, you know, are at the ready, but we are also thinking that we might go into a bit of a hibernation status while waiting for you guys to figure out all of the other committee issues because our committee has, is not representative right now of the city as a whole, and it has shrunk in membership significantly. So we feel like we're a little bit of a vestigial group that needs to have that representation that you've been calling for. So I snuck that in, which is sort of cheating Councilmember Searcy's forgive me, but it's relevant for, you know, if we are going to turn to the purple line issues that you raised a couple of years ago.
Yeah. No, I think that, that's really helpful to hear. Another question I have for you, for you all, and would be interested in your thoughts. When you are thinking about safety as a criteria, is it, are there aspects of volume, speed, are all of those factors, things that should be taken into consideration as part of that safety element? Because you could have people going to speed limit, but you have a lot of volume. And then you could have people that are speeding, and then you're going to have hazardous intersections where there's fight issues. Were there, you know, any key aspects of safety that were discussed, or is that something that we would defer to our staff to kind of identify?
Well, when we first put forward this set of potential criteria, Daryl specifically said, I would like to have a little bit more in the way of guidance from you. And of course, we're a group of people, I think, probably of our, of our members, we had one or two, like David, who are kind of more traffic professionals than the rest of us. But in the criteria document that is on, I can't, page six of the document we gave you, under safety, we elaborated a little, does the project mitigate the actual potential risks of death or injury? Projects that mitigate in hotspot locations, i.e. sites with high incidence of speeding, aggressive driving violations, pedestrian and bike injuries, or road sections with speed limits above 35 miles an hour, or with prevailing speeding above limits, using advice from polices as well as accident reports and incident reports, get a higher score. So we tried to be somewhat specific about the kinds of things that we thought should trigger a higher score.
And in addition to that, append
And in addition to that, appendix D on the 12th page of that document actually does have an example of another jurisdiction that went into a lot more detail. So that could be an example, you know, or a template for our thinking as well, where it talks about specific speed, volume, et cetera.
Yes, that's really, really helpful, because that's one of the things I know for our areas. It's speed and volume, just sheer volume of cars. So I think that's, this is really helpful. Thank you. No more questions for me. Thanks.
Great. Thanks. Councilmember Kovar, then DiBala.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to Ms. Lamb and the two colleagues. Appreciate the information. And I think it's a good example. The council asked for some ideas for a different process that could be less burdensome for residents and that could help advance our equity goals. And this certainly does that. And, you know, I don't know if we'll end up agreeing with everything, but I like the direction that it goes, as my colleagues have also said. And I think it's a good example of how we're talking about this larger question of how committees should work with us. And I think this is a good example of that. So thank you all for that. I have a few questions, and anyone can answer. So one question I had, and maybe this is not something that a committee has to worry about, but if there's a lower threshold for submitting a request, which is what would happen here, do you have any concern, and maybe this is something for Darrell Braithwaite to answer also, could it end up being a lot of work for staff?
Me at all, because I don't work for the city. No, I'm kidding. But I don't actually know that you are facing a massive number of pending requests that you would open the floodgates to. My sense is that the squeaky wheels in the city have already been squeaking and that the people who have been relatively not heard from are probably not, you know, stacked up and waiting to land. And it's actually going to require more in the way of the staff playing a proactive role in the areas of the city where organizing is, you know, more challenging. But that's, I also agree, Daryl might have other views.
Darrell, do you want to say?
Sure. I don't necessarily have an opposite view other than historically, it's been very helpful to have the community discuss it amongst themselves before the city staff got involved. And that can vary by neighborhood. We've certainly all experienced things where city staff come in with a recommendation. And because it is not rooted in the neighborhood, rooted in the street, it's met with skepticism and some distrust. And so that process of neighbor to neighbor having the conversation beforehand, so by the time the city staff have gotten involved and are organizing, before we send that first letter out to say, hey, we've got this request, and we'd like to set up a meeting to talk about it, there's been some sense of this came from the neighborhood, this came from the community. Because absolutely, almost without fail, the first question we'll get asked when setting up a community meeting is, who asked you to do this? Why are you suggesting this? Now, that's not to say that it doesn't have a place and a role, and we all can grow thick skin and go through that. But it has been very, very helpful in the past for us to be able to say, we received this petition, X number of your neighbors have reached out and made this request. So we're here at the request of you and your neighbors. So that can sometimes get the process on a better footing starting out. But, you know, that's not to say that, you know, there is other ways to do it. So we'll certainly continue to evolve and adapt. But that initial community input and resident-based initial emphasis has usually had a very helpful place in moving a process forward.
Well, so that.
But if I might interject, that's only where it's in the areas that we've been traditionally doing this, which tend to be single-family home areas. And when you're talking about an area where we've got more apartments, if we're really looking at race equity, and we go to some of the discussions that Councilmember Kostic has tried to urge, which was, you know, a statistical look, a database reason for certain things, and the things that Ms. Lamb has spoken about, about looking where safety is. I think we would love to have the communication and the conversations beforehand and have that be something that really comes from the community. But we also, if we just rely on that, then we are being exclusive about who we serve. And so I think we're going to have to, like, learn both ways on that. And then we also probably need some support from the council when the staff does come into those situations. And it's, you know, so we have the traffic calming thing that you need, whether or not they ask for it, which is a different, which is a really different discussion to have.
Right. And so kind of my second question that I was going to ask relates to what was just discussed, which is that I think getting this big percentage is clearly not fair to a lot of areas. But it does address one point that Darrell just made, which is that it does help ensure that it gets to discuss more widely potentially. And maybe that is totally impractical in some areas, like you mentioned, where there's multifamily structures and so on. But it does sort of seem as if, even without the petition, there's still going to be this need to have the kinds of conversations that maybe would have occurred in some instances that led to petitions being circulated. So I'm not sure exactly how to get to that, but I think that's an important point. And then the other thing about having a percentage, I mean, and maybe Jessica could, someone else on the committee could feel this. I like the idea of there being these objective standards, but there's still subjectivity in that. And so is there a problem, say, in letting, I mean, I don't think Darrell would ever do anything inappropriate, but what if there's just an honest difference and/or some subjectivity creeps into it? And there's a thing that people in the area really want? And, you know, staff says no. And, you know, is there a chance that they're just going to miss something that the percentage thing maybe could have overcome? I don't know if that was a really clear question, but maybe it makes some sense.
It's like, you know, every recovering lawyer here knows, you know, you can have this set of criteria that are set out, and then when the judges are applying them, this objectivity creeps in. The truth is that now, in the absence of any criteria, what do you rely on? Or I won't say that Darrell or the rest of you don't have criteria, but if they exist, they don't exist in a form that's transparent and readily apparent to anyone who wants to make the case to you. The squeaky wheels are going to look at these criteria, and then they're going to present you with an argument on each and every one of the criteria, why their project qualifies. You know, you're going to apply them, and it won't be perfect, but it would be a lot better than not having any criteria whatsoever. And also, if you're very open about the fact that you are applying an equity lens, and your project may be worthwhile, but because we are deliberately waiting a focus on neighborhoods that haven't gotten anything while your neighborhood has gotten everything, that's why you're further down the list. You know, I think it's going to be easier to say, we're not prioritizing your project, than to say, we're turning down your project. But, you know, on my street, people wanted a stop sign, and they were told, no, the safety data don't support it. And that was that. I mean, you know, okay, win one for the people who get to say no. It can happen, and it does happen, and we have the proof.
It was a good lesson for me, and the limits of my influence. I will say that on the question of, does making a change in one area affect another? You don't have in your listed criteria what you might call like flow or traffic flow. And I don't know if it should be in there or not. Was that something that you all talked about?
Well, we did discuss with Darrell this whole issue of the holistic approach. And she cautioned that that was, like she said this evening, also a prescription for stasis. And so I do, though, think that if you can see if that it's something, if experience has taught you that this action will divert traffic to another street, you know, basically moving the problem to another location without solving it, I think that there has to be a way that that factors into whether this is solving a safety problem or not. And then.
In other words, letting the staff have some power to address that, yeah. And I would say, to wrap up, I think it would be good if there was some way to try to gather data on the fender benders, understanding that that maybe just isn't gathered at all now, and that's just the way it goes. But like I've mentioned before, three of the four members of my family have been hit at that intersection of Holly and Philadelphia. And that's a four-way stop. I think Lincoln and Carroll doesn't have a stop in both directions. So State Highway, I said, they're going to try to help us there with maybe a bigger stop sign. But some of these spots where a smaller street crosses a state highway are just very difficult. And, you know, I'm hoping what State Highway does to improve the intersection might make a, you know, take some chunk out of that, but I don't know. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes, thank you. So thank you to the committee. This has been very useful. I like the evidence-based approach. I like the lower bar for request and the higher bar for decision. I have just one issue to raise, and it may actually not be for the committee. It may be for staff or for council members who've been around for a little bit. I got a note from a resident that questioned whether Tool Designs' report was very well received 10 years ago when it was presented, and specifically about the criteria. But as I hear what you're saying, I think what you're saying is, don't prioritize, use the criteria to prioritize. Don't prioritize unless you are really short on funds. So you're not saying run everything through this 10-year-old screen, if I understand you correctly. So the two things that you seem to be drawing from the design is the old inventory as a start, as a basis for what you're using, what we would develop for a current inventory of sidewalks and traffic calming. And then this, you've lifted the categories of criteria. And then if I got it right, you redefined them a bit, and for sure, you've weighted them based on what you see as current values. So my question to the city staff or to maybe to council members, Siemens or anyone who remembers, is what was the concern with the tool design criteria 10 years ago? Was it specific to some of the side requests that were coming up at that time? Was it the engineering? What was it? Does anybody remember?
We did discuss this with.
Great. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask my committee colleagues to make sure I get this right. But as I recall, first of all, her assignment was to focus on where sidewalks were ADA compliant or not. It was not necessarily where they were or weren't present. So for whatever reason, prioritizing making existing sidewalks ADA compliant versus putting in new sidewalks was somehow or other factored there. And I think it might have had to do with a funding source. But, you know, I'm drawing on a distant memory. And then she indicated that it was the waiting given to the criteria also that met with some, you know, lack of enthusiasm. And so we are very specific here to say that we have our own recommendations to you about what the waiting ought to be. But, I mean, listening to the comments tonight, it could be that you would, you might go further in prioritizing certain things over others to try and address past inequities. And you'd certainly have the support of the committee. But our main idea was that we wanted to make sure that you were aware that we thought this kind of a waiting thing was a way to do that, and that we encourage you to, you know, to focus on that and decide how you want to wait them. So that was the other thing. The waiting of the criteria was what she indicated she thought was an issue last time.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. So you've looked at that, and you've adjusted for it clearly in your recommendations. Thank you.
Councilmember DiBala, or Ms. Braithwaite, maybe you can answer that one, too?
I was just going to say, there were two emphasis of the tool design work. One was the missing sidewalk study, and that was where they did a criteria for those areas where missing sidewalks were identified. They had a rating program, a rating system for that. And that did meet some significant resistance when it was publicly discussed, because its focus was primarily, or it was heavily weighted towards constructability. How expensive is this sidewalk going to be to construct? Utility issues, slope issues, tree issues. So there was less on destinations or continuity of flow or pedestrian generators. There was some, but some people felt like it wasn't weighted heavily enough. So it basically, it really was very valuable for what it was at the time. And I will also stress to recall that at that time, the city had no sidewalk program. We did not build sidewalks. We had no funding for sidewalks. So this was the genesis of that program that was started in 2004. So the tool design work was really critical and pivotal to sort of put a spotlight on where we were with sidewalks, identify and help show where they were missing. And it was very clear where they were missing. And we weren't talking equity back then, but it was very evident in the information that was generated by what Tool Design did. So that was primarily their criteria. They also did an ADA assessment, which was, at that point, similar to many ADA assessments. It really looked at curb ramps. It wasn't looking at driveway access or, you know, length of sidewalk. So they just were looking at existing curb ramp criteria. So they gave us a map that showed ADA violations. But again, those ADA violations were in the areas where we had heavy sidewalk concentration. So it was valuable at the time, but it did have a different lens. And there was some criticism of the way the rating was done for the missing sidewalk sections.
Yeah, the other aspect was that the council members did not want to simply rely on the data. They wanted to have a political weight for where they thought the sidewalks should also go. There was a real concern about what happens if the neighborhood really felt they needed the sidewalks or really felt they didn't need the sidewalks? How did that mesh with having a waiting system? So I will say, overall, the whole study was really helpful to us. And, you know, we appreciated that data. It is pretty old at this point.
I would just add that at that point, as you've said, we had no data. And so we were coming from ground zero. There was also a lot of strong public opinions on both sides. And so the council, I think, at that point, did the best that we could then. But times have changed, and we have much more knowledge than we had then.
Well, thank you.
On the constructability issue, this is something that we talked about a little bit in the committee because of the issue of something that could be very valuable, but could be very costly if done, you know, if you deal with utilities and all that. If you think about areas like along Dale Drive, where there was a huge need for sidewalks, but I think the constructability issues there must be enormous. They've done a lot of workarounds where they've painted big lines and put in those like little barricade things to protect sidewalk verge-type areas on the blacktop without actually building sidewalks and stuff like that. So, you know, we were hoping to figure out a way that things could be prioritized where something that was really important but expensive could, you know, not just be left at the bottom of the list, but that workarounds and clever new approaches could be, you know, could be prioritized where appropriate. I don't know how you, we, you know, we included this sort of financial weighting factor for you to consider. But we hope that, you know, important costly things also get done or workarounds.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. I think we'll see any other hands. So I guess it's my turn. Thanks. I really, it's interesting to hear the history of 10 years ago of where the city council was there and a council that said, we want to weigh more the input of the neighborhood and, you know, I don't know, like, move away from a weighted criteria. And I think what we're talking about now is shifting a little bit towards using more of a. And I think what we're talking about now is shifting a little bit towards using more of a weighted criteria. So I think that's a an interesting conversation. And I I thank you for all the work that you all have been doing. And the criteria looks great, and I really appreciate all the appendices and everything in your report. I think this has been addressed, but one of the things I was particularly interested in is, I think, is the city manager brought up. One of the things we were, we wanted to think about was how do people who don't live in single family homes but live in you know, apartment buildings and other dwellings, maybe even businesses apply and are able to either look at new sidewalks or traffic calming. And I I believe what you've basically outlined for us does address that. But I didn't know if you had any specific conversations on that among the tasks with the committee members.
Well, we wanted to make it easier for somebody to trigger the assessment so that even what I mean, we, I think history has told us renters are are a lot less likely than homeowners to, you know, to get into this kind of an issue because they don't know how long they're going to be there. They may feel that they can't raise something with their landlord, and they just may not feel that they have the sort of power, especially people who have language or cultural barriers to this kind of request. So we wanted to make it as easy as possible to request the action and then have the process be as transparent as possible. We also had a big focus on on information sharing. So like, we really want to see the city ramp up on communicating with people who could be affected. So, for example, if a request comes from an apartment building, then, you know, some way to leaflet the residents of the apartment building in relevant languages to say, we're thinking about this, and we'd like to have a meeting in your social hall post COVID or a Zoom meeting or, you know, send us a note or, you know, to open up the doors of communication using better outreach, more extensive outreach than maybe is a DPW normal way of doing things today. Those were things that we thought would help to to build an awareness that that residents in multifamily dwellings, you know, can get involved and then make it as possible as easy as possible for them to be informed and to weigh in.
Great. Thank you. Um. Yeah, I think every I'm looking down at my questions, and I think everything has actually been answered. But before I think I have one question for our head of public works. And I know that we're hoping soon that you have a deputy come on board. And I know the city manager has that in her comments this evening. But I'm wondering if, and I we understand your plate is more than overflowing with COVID and other things. If you and you don't have to necessarily answer this tonight, but if you do see any next steps that we might be able to take in the near future on some of these recommendations. And again, if you haven't thought through all that, that's fine as well. And you're on mute, Darrell.
All right. We have to some degree, though, you know, we're really waiting for kind of council comments on the committee's recommendation. I I think as a next step would be making changes to the city's administrative regulations in regard to traffic calming requests. And so I'm not real clear on the best process for doing that. But I think based on the committee's recommendation and council's comments, if you want to, you know, reinforce the aspects of that that you feel you'd like most, you know, most powerfully to go forward, then I think the next step would be for us to make those adjustments and in recommendation form to the administrative regulations, which is kind of the guiding documents. There is some code language too currently with traffic calming. I don't believe there's any code language with regard to sidewalks. But that would be the next step, as far as I would see it, is to make adjustments to the city code and to the administrative regulations for these two things to to go forward.
Great. Thank you. That was really the heart of my question because I wanted to know, I know our city attorney has a lot on his plate as well, given COVID and everything. And we have many items, but it's always good to get something on the list than not have it on the list at all. So wanting to see that if we needed to have code language to look at that. Great. Thank you very much. And Ms. Lam, just to give you an update, as you requested, on where Delegate Moon's speed camera, speed limit bill is, it did pass out of the house. It is making its way over to the Senate. I think it was your committee and particularly Mr. Wagner's suggestion that we reach out to the cities of Gaithersburg and Rockville, which we have done. And we will see if we can get an amendment in that specifically has municipalities named in the bill, since they are not named now. So we are, we are working on that and coordinating efforts. So hopefully that will move along. So thank you all for staying on top of that bill and working with us as well as sending your support to for the bill to Delegate Moon. I know he appreciates all that work as well. So great. Well, I think from what I heard from our discussion tonight, the council is very much appreciative of the work that the committee has done. And we'd like to move forward on making some of these changes. I can talk to the city attorney about getting on the list regarding the coding changes. And we can look at the administrative rig changes that need to be made. And so we'll continue to move forward on this, and I appreciate the work. And I understand as we're doing our our committee work, if the committee feels like it takes a little bit of a sabbatical or a break at the moment, I would request, and this is a personal request, not from the full council, but as we're doing the committee work, one of the things that I'm curious to hear from committees is, you know, do you do you think the work you do is best done by a committee or done by a like a task force that would be named to address certain things? That's something I think all of us are interested in as we're looking at the role of committees. And so if your committee, if if all of you, if it's the three of you and who would think about, you know, the other things that if it's purple line or other things that were on your agenda to to look at in the future, if that would be best accomplished by having a standing committee or best accomplished by having a task force for a certain amount of time, that input would be greatly appreciated as we're continuing to think about how we move forward with committees.
Well, on the specific issue of the purple line, I've talked about this. I don't know if it was in the whole committee or with only one or two members of the committee, but there ought to be a task force comprised of several of the city committees working together on related issues that affect the neighborhood. And so it's not only traffic safety, but there probably a lot of the other committees, the environment committee, for example, that would other have other relevant topics. And so when there's something that that would benefit from a full court press, the current structure is not really conducive to that. So we would, I I think our committee would like to follow up with Councilmember Cersei. We tried right before COVID, we were slated to walking tour together. But, you know, you you already did one such tour with a bunch of of government officials from a variety of walks of government. And you probably could guess which of the city committees would need to all be aligned together to support you in dealing with those, but that would be an example. And I'll just say one other thing about committee life. It is very helpful to have a specific instructions from the council as to what it is you want the committees to work on. Because I know the predecessor to me as the chair of this committee that there were issues where the the committee went off and worked on stuff and brought it to the council. The council was not particularly, that wasn't their priority. So we have no interest in spinning out. So.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Emmanuel and David, too, for all your work on this. And we look forward to getting back to you soon. And I'm sure as we're putting this in place and moving forward, we'll have questions for you as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Great. All right. Moving on now, we have public comments. And I think is Ms. Machui still with us? Yes, there she is. Okay. Mary Jane, you're up. Oh, and we should all say first, happy birthday to Mary Jane Machui because her birthday was on Monday. So thank you for joining us today, Mary Jane, and I hope you had a very happy birthday on Monday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you for emailing. Thank you, everybody. I'm just gonna talk, you said who my name is. I'm in Ward Two. We, my son and I have lived here for over 35 years. My block used to be in Prince George's County. We weren't perfect, but homes, property taxes, and the overall cost of living enabled those of us not wealthy to live here then, not now. Now I'll jump around. Now overly overly zealous traffic calming. I think stop lines and stop signs are fine and speed limits. But it's causing stress on those without perfect eyesight. I have poor visual depth perception. And narrowing the streets is particularly stressful for me, especially the bump outs. And also regarding traffic calming of Casey mentioned the intersection of Lincoln and Carroll Avenues. There, there is a lot of vegetation on the northeast side of that street. That person should be asked to cut down their vegetation. I avoid that intersection. I I know what she's talking about it. And also, there are several places in the city, including one on Boyd Avenue, where the vegetation goes right into the street, where I have to drive in the middle of the street to avoid having my car scratched. Please step out up this, ask these people to cut their vegetation down. Thank you. And also, I'm concerned about the the overall gentrification that is not welcome to this older, lower income residents. The newer restaurants, beauty salons that we cannot afford are forcing out the older ones. Shampoo is left. We all these newer ones are forcing out the older ones. And and talking about the cement, why don't the city fix the cement sidewalks? There were, there's many places. I've fallen and got a compound fracture on my wrist and from tripping where the two pains don't match. Miss me when I walk, I always walk with my head down to make sure there's no more eroding sidewalks. And also the same, we seem to worship developers. Why are they allowed to cut down trees and turn smaller modest homes into much larger expensive ones? Underline expensive. As far as I know, I own the only two bedroom, one bath house in the whole neighborhood. And Fort gum going back to the racial makeup. Forty to 50 years ago, many African American families moved into our neighborhood. I was attracted by the diversity here because our small family is diverse. Now there are fewer and fewer of them in economically and racially and ability wise. There's for for few of us mixed here. Also, I'd like to end and say, I'd like to let you all know that Parents Especially Needs Adult, which was formed over five years ago, we're still around chugging along. It's kind of difficult at times because no one wants to join us, which I don't blame them. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary Jane. Right now, we'll go to council comments. Any council comments this evening?
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I know, along with many of my colleagues, I attended the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference this past week, and there were a lot of really great sessions. I wanted to just share a little bit of information from some of those. We in the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee heard from Congressman Scott, who is the Chair of Labor and Ed. And he talked a little bit about what he foresees for an infrastructure bill, which would not only address infrastructure, but also is supposed to include some provisions related to workforce development, which is a really positive thing. He also talked a little bit about how spending adjusted for inflation over the past 10 years has actually been reduced by about 18% for workforce development. So it is definitely time to bolster that again and do more with federal spending on workforce developments. We also heard some really powerful statistics that I don't think will be a surprise to anyone, but I think we're we're useful to hear with regard to the the many benefits that immigrants, and particularly undocumented immigrants, bring to a community. And they were specifically focused on economic benefits. So I just wanted to share some of those that we we heard from a think tank that joined us. So their statistics show that four in five undocumented immigrants work as essential workers as per the current classification of essential. And they pay about $48 billion in federal taxes and 25.5 billion in state and local. The the recent stimulus checks are that just passed through are are not going to be going to undocumented immigrants, but will include checks for mixed status families, which is a big improvement. Although we still have farther to go, that's that's a very good thing. And we can look ahead to the week of March 15th with some expected movement on immigration bills is what we heard. I also just wanted to apply that there were one general session and when one of the smaller breakout sessions I attended focused on transportation at the federal level. And I was very, very pleased to see the the change in tone about transportation and hearing a lot of the things that we hear prioritize in terms of bike and ped projects and equity and addressing climate change. And I I think we can be hopeful about the future at the federal level in terms of what's happening transportation wise. And that was exciting to hear. And then finally, I just wanted to let people know I am working on scheduling a Ward Three virtual meeting later this month. I don't yet have a date, but I hope to be in touch very soon with that information. And that's all from me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Cersei.
Great. Thank you. A couple of quick updates. First, I also attended the National League of Cities Conference, and it was great. It covered a number of topics, including public safety, as well as addressing the digital divide, which is wonderful. In the digital divide discussion, one of the presenters was from Comcast. And I I I'm hoping that we will follow up very soon because they were talking about some of the different programs that they have available to help address broadband internet access in underserved communities, including quite a bit of the work that they've done to try to alleviate some of the paperwork requirements, particularly for those individuals that are undocumented and may not have things like social security numbers and things like that. So definitely will be following up. And my hope is not only from those conversations, but also what may ultimately happen in the federal bill. There may be more resources available to try to address the digital divide in the city. So looking forward to working on that. Another thing in terms of public safety, and I know the city manager will talk about this as well in her comments, but just wanted to officially announce the yay, the public safety, reimagining public safety task force. I know that there's been a lot of people that have been waiting anxiously for us to get started. And I do want to say I appreciate all of the hard work that our city staff, as well as our consultants have been doing. A lot of folks don't don't understand that in order to get a task force such as this off the ground, you not only need to let people know that they've been selected, but also ensure that they have the technological capability to connect, right? So that also it means following up with people about, you know, their schedules, what they need to be active participants as it relates to technology, language needs, all of those things before we can actually go live. And a lot of that was really contingent on who was ultimately selected. So I want to reiterate my appreciation for all of the hard work that staff and our contractors have put in place to get the task force up and running. We have a fantastic set of people who have volunteered, and I'm just really looking forward to all of the wonderful feedback that and discussion that they're able to have. I've issued a blog, so it's available online if you want to just learn a little bit more about why we're doing this task force, announcing our task force members, as well as just saying thank you to all of the different residents who have who applied to be on the task force. And we are still exploring ways to engage all of you along the way. And the city manager will also talk about our first meeting, but I did want to make sure that folks were aware of that blog. And we also have an updated, a magic, reimagining public safety webpage. So if you're interested in learning more, please look there. And last thing, I don't know if you all received this in your newsletter, but this is the Rec Center Community Survey. So there's a couple of ways that you can complete the survey. You should have received a hard copy with the last Tacoma Park Newsletter. But you can also fill out a survey online. The survey is due on March the thirty first, and I do want to encourage everyone to complete the survey. If you do it electronically, it will go through electronically. But we also have drop off locations for the hard copies. And that's the Tacoma Park Police Department, New Hampshire Towers Apartments, as well as the Tacoma Overlook. And that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith, I think you're muted.
First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Siemens for helping me out yesterday and dropping out veggie boxes. I had to attend some of the workshops hosted by the National League of Cities for their conference. I, I really appreciate you doing that for, for the residents in Ward five. I've already received emails, talked to residents, and they are very appreciative of receiving the boxes.
No problem.
The demand is, is still high. If we could do it every week, I think people would really appreciate it. I would like to thank Jacquet Frazier and the, the landlord of Essex House Enterprise for putting together a COVID nineteen vaccine site that will happen hopefully very soon at Essex House. I would ask that we could have someone to reach out to whomever is going to provide the actual vaccines. I, I assume it's going to be the county's health department. See if we can lower the age and the eligibility, broadened eligibility for people that live in the building. And also would be great if, if we can't meet the number of doses that are brought on site, that we can open it up to anybody that would like the vaccine. I think this would be a great opportunity for those people that might be hesitant to get the vaccine, that they could see their neighbors, their friends, family members get it. And we could also, you know, record it on, on our smartphones and give it out to other members in the community. So I, I hope we can do this, not just at Essex House, but other buildings in the city. On tonight's agenda, we will be discussing a resolution talking about tax duplication. The Executive Committee of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League will also be discussing this before the meeting with the county council. The last big federal bill, the CARES Act bill that came out that had the broadband benefit. The regulations have been posted. I just want to share quickly what, how people can qualify. A date has not been released when it's going to be available, but people can get at least fifty dollars to help with their broadband monthly bills. Anyone that qualifies for the lifeline program receives benefits under the free and reduced price school lunch program or the school breakfast program, or did so in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, received a federal Pell Grant during the current award year, experienced a substantial loss of income since February twenty nine, twenty twenty, and the household had a total income in twenty twenty below ninety nine thousand dollars for single filers and a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars for joint filers. Meet the eligibility criteria for participating provider existing low income or COVID nineteen program. So a lot of people will qualify for this program. There is also a hundred dollar hardware subsidy in this benefit. There's going to be money in the American Rescue Plan for hardware. I talked to SSFCC officials yesterday to see if it will be possible to combine both benefits because a hundred dollars, as all of you know, is not enough money to buy any hardware to use on the internet. So they are going to look into that and hopefully they will put a bug into whomever is writing these regulations to see if we can combine both benefits so that people can use more money to, to buy either tablets or laptops, low cost laptops, Chromebooks to access the internet. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Devalla.
Yes, thanks. So Councilmember Smith, if, if you have information written down about that, that we could share with residents, that would be great. That I did, it sounds like Councilmember Searcy and I were both on the digital track at the NLC meeting, and I heard about this program, but I didn't get the specifics that you just described. Councilmember Smith, so that would be really helpful. Thanks. So I wanted to talk just briefly about NLC also, and then two local items. So I, I am on the Environment and Energy Committee, which met on Sunday, and a similar experience. Political appointees from EPA and from the Department of Energy came and talked to the committee about our two priority issues, which is water, infrastructure and climate change. And they, they were great. They named programs, they named dollars. They asked questions about policy. It was a completely different atmosphere from a year ago. I also was struck by hearing Dr. Fauci this year as we heard him last year. And again, such a difference in, in content and tone that I, I came away from the few days feeling pretty energized and pretty positive about a lot of things. So I'll begin with city staff that, about different programs I heard about during the course of the, course of the couple of days. And I, on the climate theme, one of the keynote speakers was Gina McCarthy, who's now the EPA domestic climate czar. And again, a, a lot of good information and a lot of policy ideas and, and energy around, around the issue. So the two local things, one I see in the city manager's notes that she'll be talking about composting. It's spring and most people's thoughts turn to compost. So I'll, I'll be interested to hear what, what the status of the program is this year. And I, I want to put in a plug for Habitat for Humanity is taking applications for any renters who want to step up and apply to purchase one of the two units that's going, going in, going to be converted on Garland Avenue. The deadline is short, so either contact me or go to the city website to see how to get application materials. You can pick up a hard copy in the police lobby basement. And there's a link to the Habitat website that I can share with you if you can do it electronically. It would just be fabulous if Tacoma Park renters could step up if they want to. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Wait, the other list. All right. Hold on a second. Councilwoman Kovar, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just a few things. One, I was also at the National League of Cities Conference. I'm in the community and Housing and Community Development Committee. The main focus was just talking about the federal COVID relief package, which of course is now passed the House as well. And so I, the president is supposed to sign it on Friday, and I believe the city manager will be talking about that, but it will really be beneficial to the city and will have a lot to discuss and figure out in terms of how the funds could potentially be used. This Saturday is going to be another food distribution event organized by the Shepherds of Zion Ministries. And there's been a great turnout in the past, but I'll just mention it again. I did circulate something on the Ward one lists, but it's this Saturday at Tacoma Park Elementary School. The distribution starts usually between seven thirty and eight. They have asked if people are planning to show up for the early period, try to get there by seven because there's a little meeting where they explain how things are working. But really, anyone, if you can't make it, then you can show up later and it's totally valuable. It usually runs at least into the afternoon. And then they also need people on Friday at the same location, starting at noon, to help with the setup. And what's involved is just a big pallets of food and putting the food, sometimes they're heavy, sometimes they're small items, into bins that eventually get loaded into cars. And it's just a steady stream of people because the, you know, the need is significant. And so again, when we're talking about the funding that we get from the federal government, food security is certainly something that we can look at. And then one other thing, the, the data that the city is making available, the staff is doing a good job with this on the COVID dashboard. And I try to circulate that each week when I put out the information I put out about the council. And there was something in there this week, which I thought was significant, though concerning also. When I looked at the, the racial background of the people that were receiving vaccines in the city specifically, and these are to some extent estimates because not everybody identifies. But according to the information, thirty two percent of the Tacoma park population is black, and they have twenty seven percent of the cases, only twenty percent of the vaccines. And I know this has been a challenging issue in Maryland, and we don't control the vaccines. And Councilmember Smith was talking about this also. But I wonder whether, again, once we find out the, when we're going to be receiving the funds, whether we could use some of the federal funds for some type of outreach, at least in terms of the vaccines. Because in particular, I, I mean, I did notice national polls show that the interest in terms of getting the vaccine is essentially the same based on racial background. And in Maryland, I think there was a, it was very close. Maybe there was a few percentage points, but not enough to really be notable between black and white people's interest in having the vaccine. So I feel like there's something amiss, and it may be true for his man of population as well. And so we may want to consider, again, depending on what we're allowed, how we're allowed to use the funds to work on at least some outreach, even if we're not the ones who are literally delivering the vaccines. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up a little on Councilmember Smith's discussion about the vaccine being given at the Essex House Apartments. I want to let you know that Joyce and I are working with the Department of Health and Human Services in Montgomery County and with some other people to try to bring as many vaccines to Tacoma Park as possible. Right now, the limitation is the amount of vaccine that's available. And also the, the people that are available, they're trained in administering the vaccine. That's another one of the bottlenecks. We were blessed to have the vaccines given at the Franklin Apartments last week. And it was some of the volunteer fire people that were there giving the shots, which was, which was very nice. The, you know, ideally, we would like to see vaccines given to everyone as soon as they wanted them. But there are some limitations. And right now with the limited amount of vaccine and the limited number of people to administer them, that's, that's why they're prioritizing people of age. The county is focused right now on providing vaccines to people in the assisted living facilities or independent living facilities such as the Franklin Apartments. And beyond that, we're hopeful that the next stage will be able to not only lower the age, but also get the county to go to some of the other apartment buildings and then the, the whole community at large. It's, it's moving along pretty rapidly right now, but we just have to be patient and be safe until, until everybody does get the vaccination. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens, did everybody get a shot that wanted a shot?
Everybody at the Franklin Apartments that wanted a shot, got a shot. And of course, there's the follow up shot, which they have to come back and get also.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Well, and let me say it's, everybody got a shot that wanted a shot, but they had to qualify.
Right.
So if they were, you know, young and, and with no extenuating conditions, then they're still in line waiting.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Siemens, a couple of updates. I was also at NLC this week, like everyone else. So some of my colleagues who attended the Racial Equity and Leadership Council, and there were a number of breakout discussions there. So hoping to bring back some stuff to the council on those conversations regarding the vaccines, since that is something that's been talked about this evening. I do want to thank Dan Powers on our staff for adding the vaccine information to the dashboard. That I think that's, as Councilmember Kovar pointed out, that's very important for us and to keep track of who is being vaccinated in our community. In addition, one of the things, I was at the CAG board meeting today and we got an update on the vaccines. And one of the things that the DC Public Health person talked about is the fact that the projections are that as of May, they look like that we will have more supply than demand for the vaccines. So basically what they're projecting is that come May, that it will, what they're thinking is that being able to get the vaccine will be like going to your doctor to get the flu shot. And so that's what the public health officers are believing is projected now. That doesn't mean, though, that we still have to get there, and there's a long way. And there's a lot of people who need the vaccines. And as Councilmember Kovar said, the Washington Post had an editorial today that criticized the whole state of Maryland on the equity issues. So it is not unfortunately something just in our city that we're seeing these numbers. But in fact, the entire state of Maryland is actually doing pretty atrociously when it comes to equity issues. And we see that just where max vaccination sites have been placed across the state. And the fact that Montgomery County still does not have a mass vaccination site. So that's, that is one thing that we all need to be working on. In addition, what was also mentioned at the CAG board meeting was the importance of the peer to peer information. The Councilmember Smith said this. And so if you do get vaccinated, it's important to also tell people about getting vaccinated. In particular, I've heard a lot of concerns from members of our community about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine and whether or not they should get it. And I think it's very important, and I talked to Dr. Gales about this. The, the county, when we had our call last week, the information that we need to get out to folks is that the Johnson and Johnson vaccine is effective, that if you have the opportunity to get vaccinated right now, get vaccinated. And I will let folks know that I was able to get the Johnson and Johnson vaccine on Monday morning. And so had, did have some side effects, but I highly encourage people to get vaccinated and not hesitate to do so. And if they need further information, please let us know. The county website on COVID nineteen vaccines does have information and specifically some more information about Johnson and Johnson. And just the nice thing about it is it's one and done. You get just one. And just the nice thing about it is it's one and done. You get just one shot and then you don't have to go back for another. So just some more information on that. Just a quick update on the city manager search. The online survey that is up on the city website that we have in multiple languages is still available for folks and will probably stay open until the end of March. So people can still fill that out. In addition, I, I sent a letter to our county executive and county council this week. Just making sure they're aware of a number of the incidences that have taken place in our city. The destruction of property and the scraping off of the image of a black woman on the picnic tables at the gazebo in December, as well as the two swatch stickers that were found in the community over the last couple of months. I wanted to make sure that the county executive and county council were aware of these instances and the response that we were getting from county park police and other agencies and asking for better coordination with the county as we are working on these issues and ensuring that we are welcoming an inclusive, not only city, but county. I immediately did hear back from county council member Glass as well as Abenaz today after sending that. So I'm glad that they received that and responded right away. I think that's it for me. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. I know we're running late, but I have a lot to cover and I have a special presentation by Dan Powers, our public administration specialist. First, I'd like to announce, this is the only people kind of referenced it, but today Congress has approved the 1.9 trillion COVID stimulus bill called the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It just needs the president's signature and it will go into force. The bill has provisions that have been well covered in the press related to stimulus payments, additional unemployment payments and payments for many families with children. There are also other very important provisions in the bill, including significant help with mental health care, rental assistance, childcare and many other areas. One provision of particular interest to us in Tacoma Park is the allocation for local and state governments. Tacoma Park is slated to receive fourteen point eight million dollars over two years to provide assistance to households and small businesses that have been hurt by pandemic-spurred economic pain. It can also go to offset declines in local government revenue and to assist with water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. The funding very specifically cannot go to reduce property taxes, property tax rates or buy credits. As we learn more about what can and cannot be done with the funds, we will be drafting a strategic plan regarding the uses of the funds and the timing on expenditures. The council would then review and approve that spending plan. The funds must be spent by December 31st, 2024. The funds will come to the city of Tacoma Park in two parts. Approximately seven point four million dollars will be transferred to us through the state of Maryland within three months. It takes, there's a maximum of two months to get the funds to the state of Maryland and a maximum of thirty days to get the funds to the city of Tacoma Park. The second seven point four million dollars will be transferred to us one year later. We will, we plan to have a special fund identified in the budget for the receipt of these monies and we'll be tracking them closely for reporting purposes. To give a sense of the magnitude, this is about thirty-five to forty percent of our budget. And it's greater than all of the property tax revenue that we get each year. The amount of money is large and will require staff and technology to manage it properly. We want to get the funds to those who need them in the way that's most helpful to them and to document all the processes. Where we can, we will be allocating funds in ways that also help the city for the long term, such as establishing the communications methods that best work with our residents and there are, and with our small business owners, arranging for technology improvements that will help in work across departments, leveraging county and state funds on large infrastructure improvements in Tacoma Park, and developing additional connections with nonprofits so that they may serve our community in an ongoing way for many years. Getting workforce development systems in place will allow residents to improve their financial situation for the future, which will allow them to continue to live in and contribute to Tacoma Park. Small businesses that get the training and systems that they need, in addition to the immediate funds, will similarly be able to become fiscally sustainable and a community asset for decades to come. This bill is a huge jolt of hope to our community and to the nation. And Tacoma Park will rise to the task to do our part well. I have asked all my staff to work with their professional associations and the connections that they have to learn what the provisions are, what the restrictions are, what are some great practices to make the best use of these funds in the most efficient way possible and to compile this information to bring to council for your consideration on how we move forward. This is a big deal. And on my way out, the money comes in the door. But it really is exciting and it's an opportunity to get over the hump, to get over the places where we've just struggled because we didn't have the funds, or we didn't have the technology in place, or we didn't have the structures in place to get those things so that not only will we get the help to the people who need them substantially right away, but we also will have a system in place for the city to move forward that won't just be as costly, that will, that will help us be able to be efficient in the years ahead. So lots more to come. This, I will say that many municipalities have no idea how much they're getting and they're just now learning and trying to figure this out. We were very fortunate to be given a heads up by some of our congressional assistants. And we've had some good discussions in-house with our staff to try to, to think about the approaches to this. This is very difficult for us in one sense. We are right now preparing a budget that now we're going to have an annex to about these other funds. So we will get it, we will have lots to go through and I, you know, it's a really nice problem to have, but it is going to be, make it a little bit more complex going through this budget season. So that's a big news. We will be preparing a blog about this as well so that we can get that information out to our residents a little bit about what this might be for Tacoma Park. Did anybody have any questions about that? I just forgot stuff. Yes. Mr. Ball.
Thank you. I just want you, would appreciate it if you would say it again, because I might have missed it. What the funds cannot be used for. So you said that this is a very large portion of a typical city budget and yet you can't use it to substitute for lowering property taxes, for example, is what I read. So yeah, so can you please just say a little bit more about that part of it?
So the, the law is very specific that these funds cannot go to reducing property tax rates or to providing property tax credits. It is, also can't be spent to make contributions to pension funds. They're very clear about those prohibitions. Now, I think there's a lot of flexibility about how it can be used to help people who have been hurt by the pandemic and that, a lot of that is for housing. And so I think that there are ways to address that, but we are going to be learning what the details are in that and how that moves forward. This is not, one of the big parts of this is to address lack of revenue, foregone revenue. We certainly have had a huge cut in our recreation department revenue. We've had impacts on our interest rates from our accounts that went down last March and didn't come back up again. There's a, there are a number of areas that have had some impacts or not large. And then we've never quite known what will happen with income tax, but we have a way now to accommodate that and to document that and to be able to use those funds for our work. But most of this money is to, is to go out. Most of this money is to go to people who need the monies. And so it's really quite a remarkable contribution. And now you've also got money from the state, from the county and directly from the federal government. And so how does this work together? And that will be a big challenge for us to work through. All right. Councilmember Kovar, I'd see your.
Yeah, just one thing I, I wanted to mention also that relates to what Councilmember DeBaul was asking about. In the bill, it also says, and I don't know how this would work, but we can also give money to collaborate with nonprofits and business associations and things like that. So we could share that, not just hand it over to them, but work with our local business association with nonprofits that are helping housing immigrants, all those kinds of things. So it's not literally the case where our staff have to provide every service as much as coordinating it as well. So I think that's a great option for us, depending on what the, you know, the specific regulations.
Yep. All right. So go on. We did talk about vaccines a bit. Vaccines definitely are more, are coming out a little bit more than had been. I've heard two different buildings that have gotten vaccines. Please, we've been trying to coordinate this with the health department. And if they don't tell us, we don't know. So if you hear something, can you let us know? This is one of the things that has been frustrating is the lack of communication and real sharing of information. And we want to make sure that we are getting the vaccines to the people who need them. I truly, truly think that, while I appreciate the, the call for a mass vaccination site in Montgomery County, where they're talking about is far from us. It's much better for the folks who are not getting the vaccines to bring it to them because it's, it's not only the computer difficulties of trying to get the appointment, but it's the transportation to get to the sites. And so the more that we can get this to come to our community, we're still waiting for it, for a number of our city staff. So the more that we can get these things coordinated, the better. In the meantime, the, as the mayor said, if you, if there's a vaccine available to you, take it, get it, take it as fast and get it as soon as you can. You, about a third of the people who get them do have some effects from the shots. So don't plan necessarily for a big night after the shot. You might be one of the ones that needs some time to recuperate. It has been a year, to the day, actually, since the NBA shut down due to the pandemic. And for some reason, for me, following my son's sports interest, that was when the pandemic was real to me, when the sport, when NBA shut down. Two days later, City of Tacoma Park went to largely reboot operations and that continues to this day. I want to thank my staff for the essential work they have done on behalf of Tacoma Park at great cost to themselves and their families. And I am so sad at all of the losses felt in this community by our staff members and by our country as a whole. The end of the pandemic is in sight, but we can never forget the scary times from a year ago. And now, the sadness and the amazing strength of so many to keep things keep serving and to keep on carrying on. So I just acknowledging that it was, we were on the dais at the time. We got the news that these things were changing, but it's, it's been a year and it's, it's amazing what we've learned from it and, and what we've learned, what we can handle. Councilmember seriously mentioned the reimagining Public Safety Task Force. The, the website page is really helpful. And you can see the pictures of most of the members of the task force and read about them. And that will, will continue to gather that information. The first meeting of the task force is March 16th at 6:30 PM. It will be available to view. And we will be working with the task force members or the consultants that are working with them will work to set up a good schedule for their meeting dates. So we're, part of the thing that we're relying on is to give and to respect their, their time and their interest to make sure that the schedule works for them. So part of the reason, I know people want to know when all the dates are, as soon as we know it, we will get that, that information out and it will be on the Public Safety Task Force page. I wanted to give an update on Tacoma Junction project. So after many years of the work in the development review process, there's only one piece of information that is outstanding from the other developer reviewing agencies, and that is the State Highway Administration's comments on the site plan and lay-by. They have been reviewing this since January of 2019. So we are waiting now for them to provide their comments on the design for the lay-by. I, I want to note that a major reason that the city is interested in the way that the lay-by is designed is that the lay-by is the only means for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op to receive deliveries that meet transportation safety standards with or without the development project. And we want a permanent safe solution for the co-op to always get its groceries. The project, as a project, has many benefits for the city. There would be a lot of problems for our city and neighborhood if it does not go through, but we are waiting to see what SHA has and their technical information can provide us in the review of that lay-by. I know that there's interest by, in DC to have Montgomery County planning schedule, the planning board schedule, consideration of their review soon and we the city council will be weighing in before that. That's, that's the process and we will see what that schedule works out to be. And as we find out, we will be sharing that. Like to note, we are doing some hiring. So I've got some links here. I'm not doing this part. There's obviously a search for a new city manager, but there's information on the website about that. But there is many other key positions that we're working to fill. We're recruiting for the Housing and Community Development Director and keeping fingers crossed that we're nearing a decision on a new public works deputy director and a new planner. And I urge people in the meantime to look at our careers webpage if they're interested in some positions. Certainly as these federal funds come in, we're probably going to have to do some hiring there too. So check in often. I wanted to note, our IT manager has sent out a message to our council and senior staff that we did have, we were notified of a security breach last night. This is a national breach of our cloud-based security camera provider. And we are taking all the appropriate steps to to handle, you know, make our systems more safe. I do want to note that there's no personally identifiable information that was associated with any of the things that could have been breached. So that's not something that would be of concern. It does affect some of our video that we have for incidents and for the video that we had on our ballot boxes. And so it is something that we're watching and, you know, other major corporations like Tesla, whatever, were also part of this data breach. So we're kind of small potatoes in that regard, but we are taking the appropriate steps. Councilmember DeBaula, and I know a couple others have asked me about the availability of food waste compost that people can use for their gardens. It, we have had it in a location that's not accessible during a pandemic. It still is not accessible. And we hope that that gets lifted soon, but we it's in an area where our public work staff works. So we don't want the public coming into that area. And we still have not been able to get our public work staff vaccinated. So we're taking this, we need to maintain their safety first, but we are hoping to move forward soon on having the compost available. It's one of these small but difficult things during a pandemic that, that we can't get every. And so I did want to be clear about that. And finally, I wanted to announce that our, we got the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Budget Excellence again this year. That is a huge deal. First of all, it's really difficult to get. And we got it during a pandemic. And our staff, of the four people who really worked on it hard, two were brand new and we still managed to pull this off, do better than we did the year before. And of course, next year will be better, but really proud of my staff. Our finance director, Susan Chung, is just a wonderful manager of this process. Our, she, her assistant budgeting and account, budget and accounting manager, Ron Koali, worked so hard on it. Our communication specialist, Donna Wright, pulls together the document and the photos and all of the things that go in there. And Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark jumped in with both feet. And I'm just really proud to be associated with them. I'm very pleased that they won this award another time. And finally, it's not in my notes, but school starts Monday for, in real person for some students. Our crossing guards will be back. We'll be watching safety. Please drive carefully. And now I think we'll turn it over to Dan and Jessica, whomever must have jumped right in.
All right. Good evening, council members. This is Dan Powers' first time presenting before you, so I did want to give him a quick introduction. We're so lucky to have him on our team. He joined us in January, freshly graduated from a master's in planning at MIT. Moved to the area from Boston, and he's really already made himself indispensable in our team. His master's studies were focused on promoting equity at the local level. And he's really already made a difference in the past two months, particularly in terms of data analysis. As many of you mentioned, he's been updating our COVID-19 dashboard. He's been coordinating a lot of our legislative session bill responses. And we've also started him on our police department data release as well as evaluating performance measures for the budget. But he's also been working on census data for the city, which leads us to the presentation this evening. During the council priorities retreat, I believe it was Councilwoman DeBala who asked, who said that it would be wonderful if the CDC's Social Vulnerabilities Index was mapped for Tacoma Park to help us in a real data-driven approach to COVID-19 response. And Dan heard that comment and was off running. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Hello, everyone. Excited to be able to present to you today. So as Jessica mentioned, based on the interest expressed at the council priorities meeting about getting a better sense of social vulnerability in Tacoma Park, I took a look at the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index data and tried to work on mapping that. So the Social Vulnerability Index is something that the Center for Disease Control updates about every two years to assist communities in disaster preparedness. And they define social vulnerability as the potential negative effects on communities caused by external stresses on human health. So there's one index that is a value assigned to different geographies to measure social vulnerability. And that index is made up of four sub-indices, which are called themes, that are meant to represent different aspects of social vulnerability. So those are socioeconomic status, household composition, race, ethnicity and language, or English language proficiency, and housing and transportation. And then each of those four components are made up of different census variables that come together to make up the sub-indices. So the idea is to have one measure of social vulnerability overall, four measures of the components of that, and then that are made up of different sort of data sets at a local level. So other places have you used the index in climate preparedness? And it's part of both the Montgomery County and Washington Council of Government Plans for Climate Preparedness. And I should also mention before showing the map that the city in the planning department maintains a demographic map already. There are some differences between the, this map and the social vulnerability maps I'll show. First, while this has some of the variables that make up social vulnerability, it doesn't have the full set or the overall measure of social vulnerability. This is also at the block group level, which is a smaller geography than is available for the Social Vulnerability Index, which means that, as you'll see in the social vulnerability maps, there are some things like wards four and one get grouped together at the census tract level, but are more sort of discreet at the level of a block group. So this is, I guess, still serving a bit of a different purpose than the social vulnerability map. But wanted to highlight that this also exists, providing maybe a similar set of information. So now getting into the social vulnerability maps, I prepared three different maps, each showing the overall social vulnerability index and the components, and then the components of the components, if that makes sense. So first, the, the three different maps are one for Tacoma Park's census tracts alone, another for all census tracts in Maryland, and then another for, or this is for all in Maryland. And then this is for all census tracts in Montgomery County. And the way that the index and the components, the, the four major components are expressed are as a percentile of all tracks in Maryland. So in looking at the tract that mostly covers Ward five, among all tracks in Maryland, it's ranked as the 87th percentile of social vulnerability, which means that 87% of tracks in Maryland have a lower social vulnerability index than the track that's mostly covering Ward five. Similarly, the tract covering Ward one and four is in the 70th percentile. And the tract that covers sort of all different parts of Ward three, one and four is also in the 72nd percentile. And in the pop-up box, you can also see the percentile values of each individual component. So looking at Ward six, in the race and ethnicity and English language proficiency component, Ward six is ranked in the 78th percentile among all tracks in Maryland. Ward five in the same component is ranked in the 88th percentile. And then the percentile of housing type or transportation, it's in the 97.6th percentile, which means 97.6% of tracks are ranked in lower on the aspect of social vulnerability relating to housing type and transportation. So the first layer that's shown is just the overall social vulnerability index with a legend here describing the shading. But there's also layers for each component. So looking at socioeconomic status, Ward five emerges as ranked in the highest percentile with an 81.5% ranking. And then the tract covering parts of Ward one and four show up as the second highest around the 70th percentile. Then I'll switch over to the Montgomery County map to also see some of the tracks that are in neighboring municipalities. By household and disability component, the tract covering parts of wards one, two, and three shows up as the highest in Tacoma Park around the 65th percentile. While, and the track covering parts of Ward one or three and two also emerges highly in the 41st percentile, at least in the city. And looking at the percentile values for race, ethnicity, and English language proficiency, all tracks in Tacoma Park relative to other tracks in the county tend to show up higher. But Ward five shows up as the highest and then Ward six as the second highest. And then finally, looking at housing type and transportation, again, compared to other tracks in the county, tracks in Tacoma Park are rated more highly in terms of social vulnerability, meaning that they're more vulnerable by, when looking at housing type and transportation. Then, as well as the sort of high-level components and the percentile rankings that are against all other tracks in Maryland, there are layers for each of the variables in the census that make up each component. So for, and those are shaded in the same color as the component they make up. So for instance, socioeconomic status is shaded green. And that's made up by percent persons in poverty, unemployment rate, per capita income, and percent of people without a high school diploma. Household and disability is shaded orange, and that's made up by people over the age of 65, percent of people under 17, and the percent of people with a disability. And also the percent of single-parent households with children under 18. And it follows in the same order as the variables overall. Then, in looking at some of the specific, and these are also, while the high-level components are expressed in percentile terms, meaning they're expressed relative to how they rank against other tracks in Maryland, these variables are expressed in just the raw values because that, I think, would be more meaningful if you just want to find out information about the tracks that make up Tacoma Park. So I guess, looking at percent of people in poverty, when looking at at just Tacoma Park, the track covering Ward five tends to show up most highly around 14 to 15% rates of poverty. And then the tract covering parts of Ward one and four and parts of Ward three and one and four also show up more highly. When looking at unemployment rate, the track covering Ward five again shows up highly. And then second, the track covering Ward four and Ward one. And I think I should also emphasize again that because of how the tracks are laid out, there is some sort of grouping here that the demographic map can maybe get at more granularly in looking at the percent of people in poverty at the, in the demographic map, for instance. It seems like there are some differences between what's getting grouped together in the sort of overall map. In looking at per capita income, all tracks in Tacoma Park tend to have lower levels of income compared to other tracks in Montgomery County, just based on, or I guess specifically around Bethesda and Potomac. But Ward five again shows up as having the lowest income levels. And looking at the percent of people without a high school diploma compared to other tracks in Montgomery County, Tacoma Park tends to have lower levels. But if you want to just see sort of how it compares within Tacoma Park, you can look at a, the map specific to Tacoma Park and see that Ward five tends to have the highest percent of people without a high school diploma approaching 14%. And the tract covering sort of all different words shows up second highest around 10 to 11%. And looking at the percent of people over age 65, again, compared to the rest of the county, Tacoma Park doesn't tend to rank too highly. But when looking at tracks within the city, the track covering parts of Ward four and one tends to rank most highly. And looking at the percent of people under 17, the sort of southeastern part of the city, and the track covering wards one, four, and three tends to show up most highly, covering approaching 25 to 29%. And looking at the percent of people without a disability, the track covering Ward six, wards one and four, and wards one, four, and three all show up more highly approaching around 10%. And looking at the percent of single-parent households with children under 18, the track covering Ward five, wards three and two, and wards six all show up more highly approaching 11 and 12%. And looking at the percent of people of color, the track covering Ward five, Ward six, wards one and four all show up most highly, Ward five approaching around 50%. And wards six and, the track covering Ward four and one approaching 55 to 60%. And looking at the percent of people with limited English proficiency, the track covering Ward five and parts, or most of Ward six shows up the highest around 8% for Ward five and around 6% for Ward six. And looking at the percent of housing and structures with 10 or more units, the track covering parts of Ward one and four shows up highest. And then sort of other tracks across the city, except for the track covering parts of Ward three and two all show up more highly. In looking at the percent of housing with more people than rooms, meant to get at overcrowding, the track covering Ward five shows up highest, and then the track covering Ward one and four comes up second highest around four to 5% each. And the percent of households without a vehicle, Ward five again shows up most highly. And then the tracks covering, where it's four and one and parts of Ward four, one and three show up most highly around 15 to 20%, or 15% for the latter two and 20% for the track covering Ward five. And finally, looking at the percent of people in group quarters, which could be college dorms or medical facilities or assisted living facilities, the track covering Ward five shows up most highly in the city by far compared to any of the other tracks. So I think potential uses of this in the future could be to potentially help in targeting services or responding to disasters or crises as other cities have. I think the city of Chicago has used it to help its approach and messaging during heat events. And Rhode Island includes social vulnerability indicators and its sort of overall equity indicators. There should also be an update from the CDC on this data for 2020. This is all for 2018. And finally, this, the layers here, theoretically, there could be other layers that do deal more directly with disaster response. Or, for example, this isn't very illustrative because there are many flood zones, as FEMA defines them in Montgomery County. But this version of the map has a layer for flood zones across Montgomery County. And a similar type of information could be added in related to, as council member Smith suggested, food deserts or sort of other aspects of social vulnerability or disaster preparedness. So I think that mostly covers the maps, but happy to answer any questions or.
Thank you, Dan. I think I see a number of hands up. I'm sure we can think of a lot of things that this could be applicable for, and we really appreciate. And I just want to remind my colleagues, while we want to dig into this tonight, we have a lot of things on our agenda. That doesn't mean that we don't want to spend time and thank Dan for this, but this was to give us kind of tonight a taste of what some of the things Dan is working on, since he hasn't come before us, since he's been working, but I know he's been working really hard. And as we begin to get into budget and other things to know that there are these kinds of tools available. So just having said that, because it's almost 10 o'clock and we still haven't gotten to our voting items or our work session tonight. So I'll go first to Councilmember Siemens, DeBala, and then Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and, more important, all the work that went into building this presentation. Lot of, lot of data, a lot of information, but I'm really concerned about the city using this data in this format for making decisions about the different neighborhoods and, and work in the different neighborhoods. And as much as I love my neighbors and my council member, Mr. Kovar, we've got lumped, we've lumped Ward one and Ward four, two completely disparate wards together for this analysis and it, and it, it's good to be integrated in such a way in some terms. But if you're looking at where you need to concentrate services for, you know, based, trying to target where needs may be for disabilities, education, income levels, it seems useless when you're lumping two neighborhoods like that together for an overall image of what that, what those neighborhoods are. And so I would, I would need some convincing that that this is showing a real image of Ward four or Ward one when they're being measured from the same yardstick.
Perhaps I can answer just for a moment. You know, we're very familiar with even just how where Victory Tower is located can, you know, change the whole otherwise concept of Word one. So it can, it can do some interesting things. I think where this is most useful is on how we can get grant applications, how we kind of compete with other jurisdictions, not perhaps as much as how do we serve neighborhood to neighborhood, because we do know the actual specific streets and neighborhoods better from that, from that granular point, but this at least gives us some of the data that is looked at nationwide when we're, when we're looking at how we fit in on that level.
That's true, and that's something that Word four has benefited from in the past and is, will not be able to benefit from in the future with this evaluation.
Yeah, and Councilmember Siemens, I just wanted to comment that it's, it's, that's why we have the city's demographic map at the block group level, and we do have Planning Division Director Roz on as well this evening to kind of highlight, this is not a replacement for that map, but it is, as the city manager stated, helpful for advocacy beyond, you know, external advocacy, particularly for funding.
Right, and like I say, that funding in the past has come to, some of that funding has come to Word four, which will not be able to come to Word four with this type of analysis. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
And Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, the, the difficulty, of course, is that this, this doesn't go down to the block level, which allows the refinement that would address some of the concerns Councilmember Siemens has. I think the comparisons with other parts of the county, with the other parts of the state are, are very instructive and useful. And then, should we be so lucky as to attract resources or make the case for more, for more attention in, in our community, then I, I think that, that our street-level knowledge can kick in at that point. And so I, I see it still as pretty useful. And I wonder if the 2020 census data will then give us more current information, at least for some of these categories, at a more refined level, and we can not be so forced into the, the categories of the census tracts. I remember having this discussion when we talked about the Housing Strategic Plan, because it was the same kind of thing. Some of it was at the block level, and a lot of it was at the census tract level, which mushed together different wards and wards with parts of, other parts of Montgomery County, and it got a little, little squirrely on some stuff. But I, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I, I appreciate the, the, the potential for this as a tool and only for the purposes that it's useful. I was going to to add that the county has used the CDC Social Vulnerability tool analysis, as has CAG, the Regional Council of Governments, for analyzing climate, climate impacts and climate mitigation, excuse me, adaptation and climate-related health issues. And so I remember asking if some of the data layers that the county had for different health issues, for heating days, cooling days, extreme heat days, extreme rainfall days, all of that stuff could be made available to the city, and at that point, we didn't have anything to hang it on, and now we do. So I can talk with, with Dan or Jessica at some point in the next little bit about how to get access to that, to to build some more layers that may help inform some of the other issues we're, we're working on, but I, thank you so much. I think that, that's it for me.
Councilmember Smith.
Dan, first, I want to thank you for all the work that you put into this, building out this, this map. Can you tell me, looking at Word five and all the indexes that you have, is there anything positive that, that you found in the, in your, your look at Word five?
Yes. I think sort of the, well, the percentile ranking for household and disability is pretty low for Word five.
All right.
Compared to all their tracks, but I think maybe the idea of the project, just like looking at aspects of vulnerability, it sort of lends itself to like looking at the things that make up vulnerability, which.
Right, right. You know, I, I look at this as like the, the first iteration of digging into this data. I hope that you will come back to the council, you know, maybe six months, a year from now, with other data sources so that we can, you know, see if anything's changed, see how the census data impacts some of the, the results that you gave us today. Because I think this is just really important, you know. A few years ago, we had very little data to talk about, you know, what's going on in, in the city and specifically the ward. So I, I really thank you for, for doing this project. Have you thought about, you know, trying to correlate budget expenditures for the last maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years? And one outlier would, of course, be the Flower Avenue project. Correlate those to some of the, you know, I guess you could take an average of the indexes that you have here. And if, you know, we've spent more money in Word five or Word four and, you know, compared to other previous fiscal years. Because, I mean, I would like to see if we've been flat with spending money in Word five. We've seen, seen some increases that might be able to, you know, change some of these indices that you presented. But I think, and, and another thing is bringing in, if there would be a way that we can look at bringing in NGOs, or if we have brought in NGOs in the past, like Impact Silver Spring, other organizations that have possibly worked on different things in, in Word five. One time, we had the Ace Academy in, in Word five, and there was an after-school program for kids. It was one of the few programs in Tacoma Park that ever received a million-dollar grant from Department of Education. But it would be nice to see if the money or outside NGOs can or have have any impact on some of these indexes. But other than that, Dan, I thank you very much. Do you have anything that you're thinking about that could make improvements to some of the wards that may not have been in your presentation? And are there negative external forces that might be out there that you may have considered, but you just didn't present them?
I think maybe to the first part, just the 2020 census, if the data is reliable, should have information at the block level, which is smaller than the block group, which should, I don't think will have the level of detail of some of the, like, variables included here, but should still be sort of a more specific geography to try to look at some of these types of questions. And hopefully, yeah, more without lumping together as many of the geographies as, as this does, but and to your second question, or could you maybe elaborate on that?
Well, I mean, you know, is it, do you think maybe some policy that the city, you know, passed, whether it was us creating a sanctuary city, and because there were so many multifamily units in Ward five, the people may have had lower incomes, so that had a externality that impacted on us having these negative or, you know, lower indices compared to some of the other wards in the city.
Councilmember Smith, if I might, one of the things that, but first of all, the actual housing stock is something that really makes a major difference. And many years ago, when I first started working here, there was a large Vietnamese population in apartments in Ward five. And so there has been some turnover. It has been a place that people come as a, as a first stop and then maybe move on. I do think that the opportunity with the American Rescue Plan funds for, can use the data about these elements of social vulnerability and target where do we focus our funds? Where do we make the difference? And so monitoring that, watching it geographically, using this data will be really helpful. And I think that may be the, that may be the way that makes some significant difference, I think, for the areas that show up on the Social Vulnerability Index, in particular in Ward five. So I think that's an exciting thing to monitor and to target. And so, you know, I'll be watching it even if it's from a distance, because I do want to see that money work.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I just want to make sure that we take this opportunity and be able to make changes. Right? Change the scale that Word five is, the negative aspect that Word five is on, and find out actual policy and, you know, and, and budget implications that may make changes. But thank you very much, Dan. Excellent work.
Councilmember Searcy.
Hey, first, thank you so much, Dan. One thing I will say, what I learned in grad school is with data and analysis comes great, great power. Use it in a way that can, can really facilitate change, but you must use it with caution. So one of the things that I would encourage us to do is to stop thinking about this data from the ward level. And that's primarily because the census tracts do not align with our wards. And so because of that, it can give a mischaracterization of the demographics of our specific ward. So if we look at Word six, for example, there's a huge chunk of the census tract that is actually in Ward two, but it would be captured as part of Word six, right? Or similarly, there's a part of Word six that's closer to Ethan Allen in New Hampshire that is actually captured under most of the data for Ward two and part of Ward three. So I would encourage us to not want to go down that path of, the only ward that, Councilmember Smith, you could do that, because your census tract aligns very nicely with the borders of your ward. But the other wards is not the case, and that's one of the real challenges with using census tract data. And so one of the things that I would encourage us to do is to not necessarily think about things from a ward level, although Ward five, Councilmember Smith, you can, but the rest of us should probably think about this more from a citywide view. So look at how, as a city, our colors are kind of changing over time, so to speak. Do we see certain parts of the city get darker? And right now, we're just looking at the 2018 data, but how we would compare like the 2018 to the 2020, and maybe some of the 2016, to kind of see how those colors may progress over time, which might give you a better view of how the city is advancing over time versus really trying to hone in on, well, my ward is at ten percent and my ward is at twenty, and I don't know if that's right. I think we should really look at that, look at these numbers from the perspective of the city as a whole. And I think that will help us still with making some of the really important advocacy statements we want to make. But I don't think that we should go down this rabbit hole of, of kind of that ward-specific overlay, because it's very messy, and there are also some parts, when I've looked at census data in the past, there are also some parts of Word six that weirdly overlap with Prince George's County as well. So there are some places where, when you're comparing certain parts to Montgomery County, it looks totally different, but if you throw in some of that Prince George's, it looks a little different. But I do think that this is really helpful for us to see how trends are changing over time. So I, I, I just want to thank Dan for doing this work, and I, I think it'll be really helpful for us to see, especially once we get that 2020 data in to see kind of how things morph with the newer data. And one thing that I do think is important to keep in mind for Word six, is gentrification is real. It is happening, and it is happening around the purple line. So we need to be mindful of that, and if there are aspects, we're seeing housing prices go up a lot. So if we're, you know, if that's one of the things that we want to really monitor, that's also something to keep in mind, you know, how are our demographics changing? How are housing prices changing? How is affordability levels changing? Because it could be the purple line effect, and that's something else that we might want to keep in mind. But overall, Dan, I think this is great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. And just to echo what Councilmember Searcy said, I really do, like, looking at this from a citywide perspective, I do think is really helpful. You know, in a moment tonight, we are going to look at a resolution regarding tax duplication. And I do know, even talking to members of our county council, and it even gets worse when we talk to state delegates, is that there is an impression of Tacoma Park that is not our reality of what the needs are for our city. So I do think having these maps, and especially looking at them compared to other parts of Montgomery County and the state, is really helpful to tell the, the whole picture of our community. So I'm looking forward to being able to dig into these more and see what you do with them. So thank you very much. All right. Great. All right, so we will move on then to our voting, I think, right? Our voting session, yeah, I think we're up to our voting session. Tonight, first up, we have the First Reading Ordinance approving traffic calming for the 8,000 block of Wildwood Drive. We had the worksite, we had a public hearing with the work session last week. I don't think there have been any changes to this, so would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Searcy, move. Do I have a second? Councilman, Councilmember Siemens, any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Caustic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, next is the First Reading Ordinance for traffic calming for Darwin Avenue. Similarly, we had a public hearing on this, a work session. I do not believe there have been any changes to this, so would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second? Councilwoman Caustic, any comments or questions?
Brief comment, if I could. One of the things that came up was, given the length of the street and the regulations that the city has, and the Public Works Director informed us of this, there's only room for one speed bump on the street, and I think given the way this street bends, it would be in the first block of it, before, the first part of it, before the bend, not the part by the parking lot. And just for those who live on the street. And just for those who live on the street, what happens is, if this is approved, then it gets marked as a sample location for it. And then those who live on the street will have an opportunity to comment on it. So I think it will still work well to have that, but I just wanted to explain that one point.
Great, thank you. Can the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dubala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
All right, so that's there. The next is, we have a resolution regarding budget hold list items, and what a difference a week makes. And a vote in Congress. So I turned over our city manager, because I know there were some questions that were raised, and she has some answers for us.
Yes, thank you. This has been something where every single week, there's been new information. So it's been a little bit of a rolling ball, and I appreciate your patience as the different information has come in. So at the work session on February 17th, I recommended that several items be released from the hold list that were in the budget. They were funded in the budget, but they were put on hold to monitor what's happening with the financial situation during the pandemic. And at this point, I'm asking that four items move forward, because financially, we are in a good place, and we need these four items to move forward. The first is an opportunity to hire and fill a vacant position for the recreation supervisor. It's a recreation position that oversees summer camps and before and after-school programs, and the part-time staff that also assist with that. Schools starting next week. We're trying to get our staff up, ramped up, vaccinated. We have the building ready for some kids, but we're not ready yet to have the kids. We do need the staff to be able to do the childcare. Because it's not going to be for a full fiscal year and only a portion of it, the amount of funds that would likely go to this position is about $22,000 for this fiscal year. I did have the the fringe benefits were in a separate category on the hold list, so I appreciate councilmember Kostic making sure that I checked those numbers. The councilmember Dubala wanted to know what's the full cost of the position over the course of a year. The likely salary for the position next year is about $57,500 with an estimated fringe of $30,000, and that's the standard entry recreation supervisor position. The second position that I asked to take off the hold list is the vegetative maintenance supervisor. That's a higher ranking position. It's likely to cost $24,000 this fiscal year. The estimated salary for the position next fiscal year is $63,500 with an estimated fringe of $32,500. And in the package are a number of questions and answers about the vegetation management division and the vegetative maintenance supervisor. This is when you get tongue-tied. That, about what is the need? I know our Public Works Director, Daryl Braithwaite, spoke to the need for this position. We very much do need to have the position. Otherwise, we don't have a real division to do the mowing and the garden work and just as we're going into spring. So I would very much appreciate moving that. It's also, by not having that position, it is a burden on the Public Works Director herself and her other senior staff to try to manage it, because there's not really a dedicated manager for that role. For road surfacing, we ask that the $450,000 that was on the hold list be made available. We have spent some time looking at the list of streets that were identified to be resurfaced. We've updated the list by reviewing those streets that at least one had had utility work and been resurfaced. Some of those streets have gotten worse since the list was put together, so our staff has reviewed the list. However, the top priority road resurfacing work remains Maple Avenue, and this would be from Philadelphia to Kennebec. Other streets from the list that need to be done are Kansas Lane between West Merlin and Eastern Avenues, Erskine Street between 14th Avenue and the city line, Baltimore Avenue between New York and Philadelphia Avenues. And then the staff identified several additional streets as very much needing work. Those are New York Avenue from Tacoma to Baltimore Avenues, Kennebec Avenue, and Houston Avenue. These funds can be spent right away. They are very much needed to be spent. And so I urge that that be approved. The final element that I asked for was $500,000 in ADA sidewalk funds that can also be spent right away. Half of that, $250,000, is for the completion of the ADA sidewalk improvements on Flower Avenue, thus completing the work. And then the additional $250,000 would be along state highways as well, along state highways, including Piney Branch Road between Ray Road and Philadelphia Avenue, and completing the sidewalk work on Carroll Avenue, which is across from the work that was done last year. So these are items that I believe are essential for keeping our infrastructure and our key programs going. We have the funds available. One of the things that, with the approval of the American Rescue Plan funds today, mean that the $600,000, $700,000 we'd put in the COVID relief fund clearly are, will be accommodated with that first seven and a half million dollars that comes our way. And so I don't see a need for that. In addition, as I've maintained the entire time, we have been managing our finances well. We are doing okay. And this relief plan allows us to recoup the foregone revenue that we did previously identify and take out of the budget through budget amendments. So we've been monitoring and being very fiscally frugal so that we are able to continue to provide the services that are essential to the city and still maintain fiscal sustainability. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. One of the things that's clear is there's about $200,000 that remains on the hold list that I don't think we will be spending, and I'm not asking for that to come off. So that is money that simply goes into the unassigned reserve to be spent as needs, as is needed.
I have a question regarding the ADA work on Flower Avenue. If the council goes forward and approves this, when do you think that would start? And are we talking about finishing it, or is just this an iteration?
Ms. Braithwaite?
Yeah, with that, the level of funding that we would have available, we would be able to completely finish the, what I call the city side, the westbound side of Flower Avenue, from Piney Branch to Carroll Avenue.
Oh my gosh.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, we'd be able to completely go through that. In terms of timing, this is really going to be a challenge, because our contractors kind of turned and went elsewhere when we didn't have any funding. We are now jumping up and down to try to get them back. So I don't have an answer yet. We do have two indefinite quantity contractors that we use. So we've reached out to both of them, had it been the city giving them our list of likely projects. So we're hoping to muster some interest in returning and getting the work done. I don't think we'll have an issue with that. I just think it may be a little bit before they're able to mobilize, they're going to have to fit us into other contract work that they've already lined up.
Okay, good. And then the road work that goes from Kennebec all the way up to Philadelphia, is there much that has to happen in Ward Five?
The
Maple Avenue. Yes, right, Maple Avenue.
Yeah, well, originally, when we had Maple Avenue on the first list, I think we envisioned it either to Sligo Creek or maybe Maplewood. But in doing the review, it really makes sense to go further, all the way up to Kennebec. So it would be that section between Sligo Creek and Kennebec that would be added to Ward Five.
Okay.
Take place of Ward Five.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lutlow. Thank you, Ms. Braithwaite. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Dubala.
Yeah, thank you for updating us with the things you said tonight. And I see that you've updated the sheet, the cover sheet online. I really appreciate that. I want to make sure I've got a couple of things straight. I'm looking at the ADA sidewalks, and it now has the sidewalk work on Carroll Avenue as the third project after Flower Avenue, Piney Branch, which of course, I would love to see. But I just want to confirm, because I'm not sure that was, that was on, that was not originally one of the highlighted sidewalk sections, I think.
The ADA list was a different, was really a
Right, forget that list.
Yeah, so just forget the list.
Right, and so during the budget process, I'm sure that Ms. Braithwaite will come to us with, as she does every year, with the list of projects in the queue for both for sidewalks and for roads. But I just wanted to assure myself that Carroll Avenue has made it to the list. That's great. And I see the same with the road resurfacing. It's clearly quite different. And thank you for taking the time to go out and double-check some of those roads and get a more current picture. I really appreciate that. And the same thing on the vegetation supervisor, the position costs. I appreciate hearing that. And my other concern had been, has been, and still is, the overall revenue picture for the city. And I hear that we now have an ability to cover if we are short on income, tax revenues next year and the year after.
Absolutely.
Great. And I still, at some point, would really like to take advantage of your expertise and get some estimates on what that's going to look like, so that
I'm working on it. We're doing all our budget stuff right now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be a great context in which to bring that up. That would be fabulous. And so, thanks. I don't have anything else.
Great. Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. And thank you for all the information. I think as city manager and others know, I was very concerned about releasing the money when it was initially proposed, and my concerns were connected to COVID, both the possible future loss of revenue that councilmember Dubala was just referring to, and also other COVID needs, including the food security we've discussed. At this point, we've had this sort of Deus ex machina, that's how you pronounce it, and those things are able to be covered by the funding that we're going to receive. And so I wasn't against the concept of the sidewalk work and the road work and the personnel slots as much as just wanting to make sure we can address those other COVID-related concerns. We can, and so I'm supportive of this. Now, I just had a few questions, and maybe someone can answer that. So one question is, separate from what has been outlined, can small problem areas like bad potholes and so on, or individual dangerous spots that have popped up after the winter on sidewalks also be addressed? Would that be through different funding? I think that was discussed last week or the week before, but I don't remember the answer.
We will, we can address that. We have some funding for it, and we would make funding for it.
That would be separate from this, right. Okay, the one other thing is, I don't think voting for this today locks in, I don't think, the specific sites you mentioned. And the reason I asked for that is just that the, there's going to be a major closure of Tacoma Avenue starting up. And that sort of connects to New York Avenue. And I'm just thinking about that and all the Pepco and WSC kinds of things. And if separately, we could have a conversation about the level of urgency. And, you know, people probably think I'm crazy to say that, you know, I don't want a street paved that's in Ward One. But I am a little bit worried about piling on.
Right, and sometimes, so one of the things that's important about having sometimes a list of streets is that we can take advantage of, like, if there's something else going on and the street's closed, and you can do some other work there right then, and you're not, and you're, you know, managing to take advantage of a timing, you can. Or you can put something off a little bit because something else is going on. So that's why we like to have a number of streets, so that you can move to a different place if it's more convenient.
And maybe it makes more sense to have the synergies of doing it at the same time. But I'm also concerned about having the whole area kind of locked down, because if one of the routes people would use to bypass the other one is also working, then it becomes really problematic. So maybe we can talk about that later. Thank you.
Great, seeing no other hands or questions. I'd ask if someone what, did I miss something?
Nope.
Okay. Ask if someone would like to move the resolution regarding budget hold list items?
To move.
Thank you, councilmember Smith moved. Councilwoman Kostic second. Any other questions or comments? Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dubala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Great, thank you very much, and I hope we can get those folks to work. Ms. Braithwaite. Terrific. All right, our next item, we have a resolution regarding tax duplication and it's a rather lengthy resolution. I just want to do a shout-out to our city manager for spending the time and going down probably a painful memory lane of the last couple of decades of her life, looking at tax duplication. But as I was reviewing this, I realized that how important this resolution really is to all of us. I want to thank some of the residents of Ward Three, who have been communicating with the city manager, myself, and councilwoman Kostic, and were the ones who kind of encouraged, were the impetus for moving us in this direction. And I think, you know, really laying out the history here is so important. I don't know if the city manager, if you want to just highlight a few things.
Sure, so there's kind of a replacement resolution that was posted, so I'd like to focus on that. And Mayor, you're right, I look back through my boxes, and I see notes from 1999 in my handwriting, and it's just, oh my God. But the the real effort here is fair payments for residents. And the property taxes that go to Montgomery County for services that the residents do not receive is a problem. It's not necessarily a simple one, and which is part of the reason it's taken a long time. But we've tried to be very clear here about what the policies are and what the impacts are. So I think the hardest and most clear point is that we had worked for years to try to get some formulas for tax duplication. But in 2011, when the recession started, and we started getting notices from the state of Maryland and Montgomery County that they were having financial problems, they froze our money. They froze our money, or the FY 2012 budget, and it has not increased. And we're in FY 21 now. This includes monies for staff and for road maintenance that we've just talked about with the Public Works Director. And costs have increased since 2012. It's just, you pay the staff more, the county pays more. If the county provided these services, they would be paying a lot more money than they're rebating us for. And an example, which was done for the FY 18 budget, showed that even with the kind of out-of-date formulas that were being used at the time, the city received $3.5 million, and we should have received another $900,000 for that year alone. And we should have received another nine hundred thousand dollars for that year alone. That's several cents on the tax rate. It's huge programs. It's it's more than we spend on road resurfacing in a year. So it really is meaningful and it is not as meaningful to the county. It's just a magnitude of difference. The other thing, and I know the mayor has expressed her uncertainty about the about the idea about what's property tax versus income tax. One really important point is that in Maryland municipalities have very few tools for raising revenue. It's mostly property tax. We do get some income tax money, but we can't set the rate. It's a it's an established state law that we get seventeen percent of what would go to Montgomery County from our residents. But what Montgomery County was trying to do was to only rebate for the forty percent that they get from property tax for their services. And that the rest of it, they were considering a grant and that they were just being generous. That's not how the monies work. It's not how the expenses work. And and so it took a long time, but I will say that partly with the certainly with the work of a number of municipalities coming together and and the task forces that I've been on for fifteen years. We made substantial progress, even with county staff, to identify a few things that should be easy to figure out. The formulas for road maintenance are agreed to between the municipalities and the county. There it's it's a it's a good, clear formula. And all the municipalities receive road maintenance funds under these programs. So if they're funded at the right amount with the formula, it's it's important and it would be more than what we have, what we get for those services now. There's also an agreement for park maintenance. There's a there's some questions about how that's defined, but but there is agreement there. And there is an understanding that the police department services that we need to have a new, we need to negotiate how to pay for police services, what the rebate is for police services. One of the things the staff of the county and municipalities also agreed to at the staff level was to make the a process permanent in the county code that would say, these are the formulas. Every four years, there would be a look to make sure that the formulas are still up to date. But it it gets it out of us debating it every year. It's just, you know, there's a there's a system, there's how it's done and it's codified and we move on. And in the past, so about a year and a half ago, we finally made some progress under county under the county executive outreach that we should be at least getting an increase on the road maintenance funds. And he it took a year for him to put it into the budget. He put it into the budget last year in his proposed budget. The pandemic hit and the county council took it out. So he's at least in the mood to recognize that that increase and he spoke at the at the chapter meeting of the Maryland Municipal League that says that those funds would show up in the FY twenty two budget. We want to ensure that that's the case. This this resolution also requests or demands that the process, the formalization of the process and the negotiation on the police rebate be done by the FY twenty three budget. And I think that those are all doable. I think there's some receptivity to that in the county executive's office at this time. And I'm hoping that this resolution and the pressure by our residents make that difference. And so I do hope it goes forward. I'm happy to ask you any questions. I have tons more information. So trying to get it down to this level was real work and but also it's also difficult for us to show some graphics. We've been trying to work on some graphics that we could help in a transmission letter. We'll still work on that part.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Smith, Kovar and Kostick have questions or comments.
I'll just say, thank you, Ms. Lutlow, for putting this together. You know, I've been trying to work on this issue with the Montgomery County Chapter of MML for a long time. I just think it's beyond money. There's there's something else that's going on. That's all I'll say. I'll leave my full comments until the meeting with the Executive Committee tomorrow, the chapter. But this is not just about money. Because the money is around in there for the county. And it doesn't mean if if the US Congress can come up with one point nine trillion dollars, how is it that Montgomery County can't figure out tax duplication? Prince George's County figured it out. So we're going to work on it. I thank you for setting the table, so to speak. But this this is a bigger issue. Thank you.
I think we should send them like an Aretha Franklin like montage to with me. I think Councilmember Smith is now on the head there. Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Thanks for the resolution. I just support and I think the historical information is really helpful. The one question I had and city manager alluded to this briefly, but I've gotten a number of questions about it just in the last few days from residents after seeing that this was on the agenda for tonight. What's the value and in of having grassroots, you know, resident lobbying directly to the county council members? And is that something that it makes sense to even try to coordinate a little bit on our end? Because I have heard from two people said such and such a group of people representing a couple of different parts of the city, not just in Ward one are interested in trying to get together to do that. And I do think it's important to if we're going to do that, to have it be a representative group that represents all aspects of the city so that, again, we need to counter this notion that kind of emerged from the presentation of the data that that the city is somehow just overwhelmingly, you know, a wealthy place that couldn't afford this. So that's a long way of saying, is it important to have the residents weigh in? What would be the time for that and so on?
So I think the the residents should weigh in. I think that it was it was really astonishing, frankly, last year that the county council members didn't even think to contact us in advance when all of a sudden at the last minute a proposal was made not to make the increase. And they need to know that people are watching them. So for that, they really need to be prepared. One of the things that's really important about having the system that we have in Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County where the 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 rebate comes back to the city government as opposed to just saving property tax owners' money is that we're able then to provide, help offset the cost of services to those who don't own property. And and the the reason that this is so important to Tacoma Park is that we do provide so many services to to residents and and those are the choices that the residents in Tacoma Park have made through the council. And so you know, our property owners may not look representative of our population, but they are representative of our interest in serving the whole community and we need to have the funds to be able to do that.
And Councilmember Kovar, let me just say the problem I have seen, there isn't any consequence if the county council members do not support this. They still are reelected. This is probably the biggest issue for the twenty one jurisdictions in the county. And they still are reelected. So they don't, I mean, they say one thing to you and behind closed doors, they do something else. But if residents tell them that this will be an issue at the ballot box, they might change their tune.
And I will say in the last couple of years, when I've talked to individual county council members, and I do know there are some residents who have contacted them individually. This they say they do not actually hear from residents on this issue. I have had that said to me too from county council members, that this is an issue they hear from us on, but they don't hear from residents on. So I think it's really important that they do hear from residents, as Councilmember Smith said.
All right, thank you.
Um, Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. I just want to first of all, reiterate my thank you to you, Ms. Lutlow, and to all the staff for working on this. And also to the Ward three residents that the mayor mentioned earlier for your ongoing work on this issue. And my question was was very similar to the one that was just raised with regard to how we can really engage residents. Because I do think there is interest and sometimes in in my experience, the last couple of years, sometimes it seems like it kind of pops up quickly and then we have to act quickly and we don't have a chance to really like get the information out. So maybe it maybe it's something that's a kind of a longer term information share to residents because I do think some of the longer term residents maybe understand the history and there are people who are super engaged with it. And then there are others who kind of don't have the full context and it can be kind of complex and and there are a lot of numbers involved. And so as much as we can really distill it to like some very specific things, I think that will help really reach a broader audience as well.
Thank you. And we do try to, we periodically put out new fact sheets so that people have that to refer to. And it is on the on the website. I do want to note that the money for the American Rescue Plan goes to different things. So the we need to make sure that the county recognizes we still need the money even with these funds coming from the federal government because these go to our regular ongoing services, not something special that the American Rescue Plan goes to.
Councilman Devalla.
Yes, thank you. There are also Ward two residents that are very interested in taking action on this issue if we tell them what and when. So I I agree with the other council members that as much advanced warning as possible, and it might not be much about what when to weigh in on this issue with the county council really would be helpful. My question was gonna be why this resolution? Why now? And why just this resolution? And so this discussion about the resolution being a statement, almost like the beginning of another push, makes a lot of sense to me. And I was gonna ask whether that item at the end about the American Recovery Plan cannot be used to solve this problem really ought to be moved up front to make or put in the cover letter to emphasize that point that that just because there's there's funding for COVID recovery doesn't mean that that's fixed this problem. And that that's really all I have to say. I think the more we the more we can do in this next little bit with a county executive who's agreed to to in in very to support this, to make it actually happen, I think, I think is any and everything that we can do right now is is useful. Thank you.
I think the timing is if we pass this tonight, send it out on all the listeners and everything and ask people to start emailing ASAP, like, and don't stop.
Can I say one point on that, though? I think we need to help a little bit on what they should say.
Absolutely.
Not dictate the message, but make sure we at least are the requests are
Yeah, no, we will. We will do a transmittal letter then to go to the county council and and also actually in that vein, Councilmember Kovar, I was just talking to the city manager this afternoon. We did send a letter in February of twenty nineteen to the county executive that I went back to today, which is actually a really good letter that we sent that is on the tax duplication web webpage on the website. But yeah, I think once if we pass this tonight, the staff will work on a transmittal letter to the county executive and the county council that could be used as something that residents could could use as well. Okay, so I do have, why don't we, there's no other questions, why don't we move this? And then I have an amendment I'd like to propose. So based on the the resolution we have in front of us regarding tax duplication, do I have someone who would like to move that? Councilman Devalla, do I have a second? Councilmember Kovar? And I had sent around, I think it's simple enough, an amendment I'd like to propose. And again, this was looking at some of the comments we've received from residents. And again, that twenty nineteen letter, I'd like to add the a therefore clause that says now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Tacoma Park calls on the county executive and council to recognize the complimentary work done by the county and municipalities in making our communities safe, attractive and welcoming, and to finally rectify this longstanding inequity. That was kind of the gist of what we had in our twenty nineteen letter. And I and I thought, well, the resolution did it, does a really good job laying out some things that having that as a resolve clause adding to it will help can I hammer the point home, I guess, as they say. So I'd like to move that amendment and see if there is anyone who would second that. Councilman Kostick, second. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Devalla?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, any other comments, amendments or items on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Devalla?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Awesome. Thank you. And really, thank you very much to the staff for pulling that together. Terrific. All right, our next that that takes care of our voting session tonight. Now we have our work session. And we're going to continue our conversation on stormwater. And I think is Ms. Braceway still with us?
Is.
Here you are. So two items that we have tonight in our work session. One is a a draft resolution. Then we're going to look at draft amendments to the city code. Before I turn our attention to that, I just wanted to see if you had any anything you wanted to draw our attention to or discuss.
Uh, no, though I don't know how many of you have seen it. I did send out some information that will be probably helpful as part of the conversation goes along in regard to sample credit programs that I was able to identify from several jurisdictions around the country with stormwater utility fees. So I think I hope that will help put a little more substance in people's minds about what that type of program might might look like.
When do you send it?
Uh, it it made it on its way to the to the webpage for the agenda item and I sent it. I don't know what was it, five o'clock? It was late, late today.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
It's on the agenda page of the website.
On the agenda page is the last page.
Okay, thank you.
The last thing, yeah.
Or and you know, we'll continue to flesh that out. But I think otherwise, the things that you have in front of you, and I'm sorry, I'm just trying to gather my papers are the other item that we have been able to put together since the last time we met is an enhanced frequently asked questions page. So I've never seen one quite so long. But we have the encyclopedia of frequently asked questions in regard to the stormwater fee. And if there's something we missed, please let me know and we can just keep keep adding to the pages. And then other than that, of course, the conversation this evening will be on the resolution and code language changes.
Great. Great. I think I'm gonna we will start with the resolution. And this was something that we discussed camera was last week or the week before. And I want to thank Councilmember Kovar for and Councilwoman Devalla for really working on a first draft of this for us to consider. So basically, the idea of So basically, the idea of having the resolution was similar to when we went through the tree ordinance. And we had our our resolution on the tree canopy. The resolution enables us to talk about our intent and where we want to go. With our stormwater management program in the city, whereas the ordinance is very specific to the work that we're doing. And how, and how we're doing it. The resolution can help us communicate to residents and also as a council. As we're considering moving forward in this work in the future. So I'm gonna see if I'm allowed to share my screen. Yes, so let me. Find the document and everyone see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So basically, I'll just quickly walk through it. I know Councilmember Kovar, if your hand is up because you want to do this or?
No, I was just gonna say something general about it, but I'm fine if you want to walk through it.
I was just gonna like basically just say like, you know, we, tonight's like history night. It's like throwback, throwback Wednesday. So the 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 front part of the resolution just goes through like, why do we, why do we have our stormwater management program? Where, what was the history of it? And talks about the state law and what we're responsible for in the city. And how we are meeting those responsibility and the control measures. When we actually started the utility fee in 1996. And established our five year capital budget. So the whole first page of the resolution is basically setting the foundation. For how, where are we and how did we end up with the the stormwater management program we have right now? Um, going into the second page, the top of the second page describes our pretty much a very extensive stormwater infrastructure. That we have in the city right now, how property owners are assessed annually. Um, it talks more about the fee structure. If we move forward with our ordinance, the new fee structure. Then, um, and sort of like the fourth from the bottom. Whereas clause, before we get to this resolve clause, we specifically talk about the increased rainfalls. And the impact that that is having on property owners. And that is the intent of the city council to also look at how to mitigate the issue of stormwater. And assist private property owners. And then we get to the resolve clauses. There, there proposed to be two, and I'll tell you why some are highlighted. The first resolve clause talks about, as I just said, the increase in storms. And rainfall, which is going to, uh, we need us and as we're moving towards adopting a new stormwater fee structure. That we're always gonna take, we're also gonna take aim at responding to the challenges of stormwater facing property owners. Um, and building resiliency. And then you'll see here, the other two resolve clauses are suggestions. The difference is that one talks about explore, the council exploring taking actions to address the stormwater challenges. And specifies exploring the possibility of establishing a climate resiliency fund. And the other one talks about addressing it and exploring options, but does not specify creating a climate resiliency fund or exploring that. So I know Councilmember Kovar, if you want to provide more.
Sure, I'll just offer a few comments. I think my colleagues and and those who are still watching. Know that I expressed some reservations about some aspects of the, the new fee structure. We'll be talking about that after this and we'll see where that all ends up. But one of the things that I said was that unless we could make some sort of commitment to. Starting to begin to address this broader problem that's brought on, not so much by increased rainfall per se. But by more intense rainstorms and recognize that and start to lay the groundwork for taking action. I had reservations about adopting the new fee structure. And so that's what this is aimed at doing. And so some of it, again, as the mayor said, is history, as we had with the, the previous agenda item. And that's just there to sort of, again, lay the groundwork and then the references to the recent storms and so on. Add to that. So I think it's important that that we do this. It doesn't bind us to anything. And even by saying that we hope to take this action in the budget, we don't have to. But one thing I will say though is that, and again, this gets back to the federal legislation that we've talked about several times already. This evening, one of the things that, one of the purposes that those federal funds can be used for. Is water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And I think we'll have to wait to see the regulations that come out, which are the, we put out by the Treasury Department fairly soon, we hope. But in terms of this, this fund that's referenced in one of the two versions of the final resolve clause. It's very possible that that could come out of funding that's provided by the the federal bill. Since that's one of the, seems to be one of the topics for which we need water and sewer infrastructure. And so then to the extent that there's also an interest in having a climate resilience fund, resilience fund. It could be more for other actions connected to our climate framework. There wouldn't be, uh, they wouldn't have to be sort of fighting over the same funds if it came to that. So I could see us adopting this, potentially funding what we want to. If that's the direction we ultimately decide to go in terms of a response to the storm or. Conceivably through the federal funds, then we would still be able to look separately and taking some other action on on climate change. So that's how I see this. And I do favor the reference to the fund in in the, in the final resolve clause. And if we want to call something different than a resilience fund, call it stormwater, you know, augmented stormwater fund or something like that, I'd be fine with that.
Councilmember Smith?
I just want to go on the record, so I support the be, the resolve clause. That states a climate resiliency fund.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, well, tonight, again, it's just the work session. We'll bring this back next week for a vote. So I know if folks have, and we can come back to it too, if we want to move on to the, the ordinance and look at those changes. Anyone have any other comments at the moment on the resolution? Okay, I was gonna call you a council member, Dan.
Just, just a thought that that popped in my head now, only this evening as I'm reading it. Is if it may be helpful in to add language about the creation of a credit program. As a, as a part of the fee structure, if that's indeed what the council wants to do. Since that would be an entirely new. Topic for us. Currently, there exists in the code, a way that people can challenge their fee. Based on inaccuracies or correction or that calculation. So that already exists, but this idea of credit program for measures taken on private property is not something that currently exists. So if the council wants to pursue that or make that part of this new. Next evolution of the fees, then we probably should have a paragraph about that too, or a sentence at least.
Yeah, we were gonna, we were gonna, Councilmember Kovar and I had talked about that and like looking at where we ended up with the ordinance. And maybe bouncing back to the resolution, but thank you for, for raising that. Councilman DiBala?
Sorry, uh, just punching buttons here. I was going to actually raise my hand to say something very similar that either, that assuming we want to do some kind of credit program. Either in the ordinance or in the resolution or both, we should refer to it. And since, and while I have the floor, since I was the one that proposed to not specifically identify a climate resiliency fund. My thinking was simply, of course, we have to look at the budget implications of any of the options that we're reviewing. And that that's a discussion to have during the budget, not now, and especially not now before we talk about adopting the fee structure. And, and so I was thinking that the climate resiliency and the climate action funds. That we were talking about, that we talked about last year and whether that's the best way to fund the actions we want to take on. To assist residents was a discussion that was best happened, would best be held during the budget. Just during the budget cycle and and not right now. So that, just for, for explaining where I was coming from with that last resolve. But, but the purpose, again, the purpose of this resolution is to state some intention and to lay out where we want to go. With the program and how we see it relating to the code changes specifically around the fee structure. So not to distract with specific words one way or the other at the end of it. But to, but to think about the purpose, why we feel a resolution is, is a, is a good complement to the code changes at this time. Thank you.
Great. All right, so let's, let's put a pin in the resolution for right now and go to the. Ordinance, sorry, and the. Before this. No, the mega, um, hold on. This is the very long FAQ. So actually, I had a question as I'm getting to the ordinance. Ms. Brayley, when we, we had this, we've been discussing on the council, the, the idea of having a cap. For the first year, does, does that need to be reflected in the ordinance language?
That might be a question better for Suzie. I would think that that could be a policy thing. That might be best put in the resolution, but again. Having less experience on ordinance language, I don't know, Suzie, what do you think?
I don't think it should be in the order. I think that's, I think that's a budgetary item, a budgetary approach to it. As opposed to changing the structure.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure as we're going over changes to the ordinance, we didn't need to have that, so.
But I think that it would need to be, it would need to be in the kind of adopting language, just not, some, somehow. Whether it's in the resolution or it's, if there's some kind of, it may be somehow in the. The where, the original kind of whereas clauses that aren't the ordinance. Uh, maybe it's there. I'll check with the city attorney in the morning on that.
Okay, great. All right, um, so looking at. The, the code and what we need to change, obviously, we're adding some definitions. So folks can take a look at that, because we're changing the, the base rate and the base unit. So that would be reflective of that. I don't know, I'm trying to make this bigger. I know sometimes it gets really. Small, that's some.
It's very small.
I know, I'm trying to like, for some reason tonight, I can't find the. The view that makes it. There it is. That better? Great. So the definitions are added. And then this was under the section, purpose of the fun. The, this is the stormwater fund, the fund shall be used for the following purposes. Councilmember Kovar suggested the addition of specifying contracting with outside consultant. To review and investigate areas in the city where heavy stormwater flows have been, have had harmful impacts on private property or public land. Or on wide geographical areas and to recommend options for mitigating such impacts. Just specifically calling that out. I think it's, it's something that we have discussed in the past. Councilman DiBala, did you have a question or?
Yes, yes, I, and it might be, it might be a city attorney question. Do we need language saying that we, um. That we are authorized as a stormwater board to hire contractors, consultants? Do we need language that, that, because I see two things here. Do we need, do we need the language about using money for consultants? Do we need the language about using money to investigate the question of public and private land together? Because when I read this, it, it struck me as very specific to one potential solution. But now that I look at it again, I see two, two different legal, two different additional authorities here. Potentially. So I'd like to just get his take on that.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll confer with him. I, I do think that it does not need to mention. I think it does not need to be mentioned that we could consult with outside consultants. We, we contract all the time, but we also internally know where some of these areas are. So I mean, I think, I think that's a fairly specific item. I, I appreciate though the question and I also appreciate the question about multiple properties. If there's something that should be referred to that.
Yeah, I know, if I can just.
Can I, can I just finish? My, my gut tells me we probably do need it. And I appreciate Councilmember Kovar bringing it up. Go ahead, sorry.
I would just say, um, on the question of how the private and public property is referred to. Definitely, that would be great to get the city attorney's input on that. And it can be phrased in some other way. Certainly, there's not a fundamental question as to whether the city has the right to hire consultants. For general categories of work that they're authorized to do. I, I think to me, it's not so much a question of, do we absolutely need to say this in order to be able to do this? As much as do we want to signal that this is a thing that we see, it's important for us to emphasize. And again, getting back to some of the points that were made when we discussed the resolution a few months ago. Were trying to. Sort of update what we've got going on here when it comes to stormwater to reflect this kind of new reality or new normal that's there. So to me.
I understand that, Councilmember Kovar, but, but when you call it out for this, it makes it sound like the other items we couldn't do outside consultants for. For, you know, inspection and enforcing.
And so, I mean, it can be revised in some fashion if necessary, based on what.
I will check.
What the city manager says, sure.
And, and it may be something that may, would work very, much more specifically. Well, let's see what, let's see what the city attorney said.
We may be able to just start that period with review and investigate areas and take out the outside consultants. Since we do that, use of outside consultants in any of those items above engineering, design, operation, maintenance, monitoring, surveillance. They're all using outside consultants.
Would that be okay with you, Councilmember Kovar?
See, what it was again, I'm not sure I quite caught it.
Take out, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just start with that sentence with review and investigate areas in the city. Just take out the contracting with outside consultants to.
Because we do anyway with outside consultants as well. Yeah, true.
Okay, but we'll still check it with the city attorney. All right, so that's there. And then I think, um, obviously, the single residential, single family residential fee that's being changed. Because that's what we're doing, that's at the heart of what we're doing.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if I, if I missed it. There's nothing here that I see about a cap. Is that something that we're still considering? Or is that something that would not be a part of the code or how would that work?
That was one of the items I was supposed to check with the city attorney on.
We're gonna check with the city attorney to see if that has to be in some authorizing resolution. So that's, yeah, that's on the list. Thank you.
As is, as is the, the question of the credit, whether it needs to be in the resolution or the.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, never mind.
So the two questions we have right now is the cap and where does that live? And it, the, the item. Um, and it the um, the item J. And now we're getting to uh, request for corrections. And um, the highlighted in blue is new. And I think much of this language came from Councilmember Kovar.
Um, it actually previously was language from Councilmember Kovar, adding some. Adding some changes that we didn't think were um. Necessary, so this is reverting back to the original language.
Oh, okay.
Probably should talk through what the goal was, because I think it had to do with first asking what your. Impervious area calculations were, uh, and prior and or to trigger your thirty day assessment. Um, we assume that we will be providing this. Information to residents directly that will include what their assessment is based on, the categories of impervious area. So they'll be getting that in the notice itself, so we didn't think we needed to identify. That they had to request that and then they would have thirty days. After that request was granted to appeal, uh, since everybody will be getting that in the initial notice. Now, now, one of the things that has changed, and maybe again, it's a question for the city attorney, when this quote was originally written, the city was doing the billing. And so the notice was direct, we sent a bill to every property owner. Uh, that was their specific stormwater bill and only their stormwater bill, so it was very clear. That they were getting noticed and that they had to pay. Um, since the fee is now paid as through the county's property tax bills. It is identified as a separate stormwater bill or special fee from the city, but it is much less clear. Um, that it's the stormwater fee, uh, first of all. And secondly, I I think everybody gets them, but there may be some folks that do not get. This notice, it depends on how they have things handled with their mortgage companies or whatever their situation is.
I don't know that it changes this, I mean, obviously. We will be sending this out, as you said, to individuals at the beginning of it. Um, the their their charges right now are on their property tax bill, um, and so. Um, I don't know that there would be. I don't know that there would be some separate notification that would need to be done now. I do think it makes sense. We've talked in the past about, uh, perhaps every ten years doing another, you know, another whole view. Um, scan to of impervious surface, th- there may be a time that we also share that information or identify if there's changes from that. That's a long time from now, but it may be something that we reference.
Um, Councilmember Kovar and Devalla. You wanna, I guess, Devalla first and then Kovar.
Yeah, thanks, I think I'm. I'm a little confused, so in the blue, that's the original language, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, and it applied at the time to multifamily and institutional, et cetera, owners. And thus, the the C with the details of the information you need to. Um, this is request for correction, we've been talking about calling it, calling it an appeal, I don't think about. My question is, I didn't quite follow what you're. What ex- exactly, let's say we pass this. What is the next thing that a homeowner gets? Do they get a letter which is the quote notice? That details their specific fee and 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 the why it's set at that particular. Rate and when do they get it? That's one question, because I, and then, and then after that, the correction clause kicks in, is my second question. And my third question is, before all of that happens. Will there be the ability to review at least the folks who've already let us know? That their estimate is off because for one reason or another. Um, before the first notice goes out, so I'm I'm just a little um, not clear on what the. What you're envisioning at this point for the process.
Given the scope of the change of this from the flat fee to the tiered fee, I would see that the city would send a letter out to every. Every property owner, both single family as well as commercial with detailed information about, we've now gone from a base rate. To a tiered structure based on impervious area, here's the calculation for your impervious area. And that you'll see this fee on your upcoming tax bill and that there's a process if you want to request a correction. So that I see that, but that would only happen now, this year, because we're changing it. In future years, they would just get their tax bill and it would be included on that and they would choose whether or not to request a correction. Or ask a question. Um, so this would be a, uh, because of the change in fee type. We would notify everyone in detail of their calculations and the process. So that's your answer to your first question, I've already lost your second and third, so I don't remember.
That was, that was the first and second, and the third one was before that. Um, we were talking about, um, fine tuning at least some of the estimates. Because we already know that some of them are wrong, because people have called up and said, that's not my driveway or or that's not my roof or whatever.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, they're gonna have to go through the process, we can't just take that. Over the phone as a, hey, this is wrong, um, so we'll, we'll send out the notice with the impervious area determination. And it'll be up to them to formally request the correction. Uh, one of the things that we will probably need to reach out to the county for is that we've seen that in um, many cases, the county GIS data. Not many, a handful of cases, the property boundaries are not, obviously not marked correctly. On the county's records, they go in the middle of a house, they split lots, that's a, that is GIS tax data. You know, that is, that is serious in my mind, um, that the county has that information incorrect, I I don't know why that is, but it is. Uh, and so that may be a a topic that we need to bring up with the county. About how they do corrections, how we can ask for corrections and how we can verify what the correction is. It may likely require a property survey from the owner, which they should have from their purchase of the property. That verifies that indeed their property boundary is not what's shown on the county ta- tax records, but something other.
And and just to note, um, there was a question on on a listserv about saying that the county doesn't do. Stormwater fees and they do, um, but I looked on my, on on my bill, my tax bill. And you can link, I can link to my property view that similar to what what somebody would be able to do, uh, within the city of Tacoma Park. And, you know, so I think it's a common, it's a common thing that most of them will be right, there'll be some that'll be wrong. Uh, and and we'll have a process um, to work on that. Um, the the request for corrections information here was was also used in the past. Um, by folks who are getting a single family rate or whatever, because sometimes there's just, there was problems in our old data. And they would contact us and we would make the adjustments, so we've, we've worked with people in the past, we would continue to do so. To make sure that the data is correct.
So recognizing that there may be a timing issue, this, this strikes me as not quite what I thought we were talking about before. Um, I thought we were talking about adjusting some of the obvious problems before the first notice went out.
Well, Councilmember Devalla, we did talk about those properties that where it was clear that this, you know, the sidewalk was. The city sidewalk essentially was on their property that we would be taking that out, so we will be looking at these. It's, it's just that there's for ones that are very site specific that aren't city pro- kind of the city sidewalk issues or whatever. Um, I think we are going to have to, um, have the discussion with the property owner.
So in that case, I think that this process i- i- that you're, that is laid out here, which was designed primarily. To be for s- for multifamily and institutional owners, um, is too complex. And I, and I think we need to have something simpler for uh, residents who. Um, need a correction, for example, because the county GIS data is wrong. So, um, and I would, and I'm really looking if at all possible for as many of the, the. The obvious errors to be fit, to be addressed before the first set of bills goes out, because that's what I thought we were talking about.
We, we would address the obvious public sidewalk counted within private property. Roadway sections counted within private property, but everything else will require a more formal look, um, and legal. Legal review of the, of the, whatever the purported issue is.
Yeah, again.
And the items there that are, I I'm sorry, but just those four items, there, there's nothing very complicated or difficult. In that particular section, you're either classified your property wrong, you think there's a square footage error in your impervious surface. You think there's a math error in calculating the fee or a an error in who's the property owner. So those are all fairly straightforward.
And are they the only ones?
I I would think they would cover most everything we're gonna come across.
And then what are we doing? I I don't mean to dominate the conversation here, I bet I'm not the only person who's got questions about this. Um, but my last question would be, and then are we expecting someone to pay it, pay their bill and then get reimbursed? Because again, I, that's not what I thought we were talking about. Um, I thought we're, I thought, I was hoping we could address as many of these before we, the bills go out as as we, as we could. So we don't have to be in that position, um, but all people.
Yeah, remind me, um, Suzie, we need to have the, we need to have the dot information to the county in May.
Right.
So all we have is the rest of March and April, so I think it's unlikely that we'll be able to send the letter out. And people will have their thirty days timeframe before we're sending information to the county for the bill.
I think we also talked about. Sorry, I'm getting really tired, um, when they get their bill. They'll get their bill over the summer and then it won't, it doesn't have, or they'll get the notice of what. Their stormwater fee will be, but it won't be due until October, correct?
It's September, October.
September, so I couldn't remember that, so. If, I thought we had discussed that if so, if we can, if these get mailed out, because we have to give the information to the county in May. So then we're sending out information to people on what their stormwater fee is in May. Then they're seeing there's an error, they have thirty days, which puts them in June to review. We have thirty days to reply, which puts us into July. And if we have to reimburse them, that will be before September.
That's right.
That's what we had discussed before, that if we can get, so the timing of this is, if there is an error, somebody will be reimbursed. Before they actually have to pay it. So, and I think the distinction, what I'm hearing is, is that there are going to be some things that. The the staff will be able to address right away, but if there are, if there are more complicated issues. Such as figuring out a shared driveway and the GIS data is not obvious. That that is not something we're going to be able to necessarily figure out before the bill goes in. And would need to go through this more formal process. Is, did I understand that correctly, Ms. Brayley?
Yes.
So, but if somebody says they get their stormwater fee and they're looking at their property and they're like, you included the sidewalk. In this, that's something we could fix.
Yes, and and hopefully we've identified that already and didn't, didn't include it in their calculation.
Does that, does that help, Councilman Devalla, or?
That helps and it, what would, um, uh, not tonight, because it's late, but it would help me if, if there could be a. A list of the kinds of things you named two that you think you can address before the notices, the letters go out. Which is the public sidewalks and roadway sections, if there's anything else on that list, I'd love to know about it. And then what kinds of things people will need to, um. Come back once they see the bill and part of it, part of it is so that I can explain it to people. And not only just because I want to understand it, so that this whole thing goes a little more smoothly. Um, and then I also think that that maybe we need a little more language about, um, not everybody needing to do C. Uh, depending on the specific kind of issue that they're raising. Um, but not having a list of the issues, I'm not, I'm not as sure of that. Um, but thank you for explaining the timing, I think I get it now. Um, that's probably why I was thinking one thing and you were thinking another.
And maybe this is the, the process we were talking about, about like, the, the letter, um, that Ms. Brayley talked about. Uh, explaining the change in the fee structure and the process for review. Um, as we're talking about the resolution, adopting the ordinance changes, that might also be, I can't see everybody, I'm looking for the city manager. Um, sorry, I'm wondering if that could also be part of, um, if that's something else we should specify. Just as a note.
You should testify. Um, in the letter or?
No, like, is there somewhere just as.
Oh, that we're doing a letter, okay, I'll check.
Just because I I hear what Councilman Devalla, the confusion that is coming up. And I'm trying to to see how we can alleviate that confusion and make sure we have a, the pot, well, the process is going to be is clear.
Got it, got it.
So, all right, Councilmember Kovar and then Cersei.
Thank you, and and yes, just to follow up on that, we did talk about the fact that. You know, there's almost six months between now and when the first tax bill has to be paid, so that. There, in theory, should be time to address some of these things before the money's actually, oh, so just in terms of the four. Items in blue and and those were in the, uh. Have been in the ordinance and I actually didn't propose getting rid of any of those, I had just proposed that two. Errors in the square footage of the impervious surface area of the property, amended to also reflect. Stormwater management features or infrastructure that a, that a, um. Resident may have installed or a home, a property or a may have installed, and so I understand now. In in hearing from the Public Works Director, that there's a distinction being drawn between these things, which are requests for correction. And what we might think of on one level as appeals, and then a separate set of challenges, if you want to put it that way. Because someone's got a rain garden or or some other kind of thing on their property. And that would be a a separate type of way to challenge, is on, I'm not sure I. I I fully agree with that, but I'm open to that as as a way to distinguish this, but. Um, I think we need to talk about the fact that we're going to have that somewhere in the ordinance. And then the other thing I would say, and this follows up on what Councilmember Devalla said earlier. Um, I don't want a property owner to have to go at a great expense to. Correct something that could conceivably be an error, not specifically by the city, but just from the technology, and so I think in paragraph C. And this was another change that I had proposed, there really does, we, we can't ask people to. Have to include a certification by a registered engineer or professional or survey. That, that's just inappropriate to ask a, someone who doesn't know, you know, I can understand if you own a hundred unit. Multi-family property or a big commercial property, but I I don't think if somebody owns a, you know, two thousand square foot home. Asking them to, to do that is the same kind of thing, and so, um, what I proposed was that. And I don't know the exact wording, but that there'd be some other way for that to be able to prove that, that just seems totally inappropriate to me. So I think there's two questions here to me, um, in addition to that date question, which I think we're looking into now. I- is it appropriate to draw this distinction between challenging your bill on one of these four items and things like this? Versus the fact that you've installed something, and if the answer is that's going to be treated differently through a credit, we still need to. Make reference to that credit somewhere in here, and then, then, as I said, we have to adjust C, because I don't think we should be asking people to do that.
Yeah, what we can do is take a look at those jurisdictions that have a credit program and see what the language in their code is. Uh, so we can have a head start on, um, crafting the language, I I do recommend. crafting the language. I I do recommend that that issue of uh impervious area amount or an error with my property boundary is separate from I installed a dry well or I took out my parking lot and I put in permeable pavers. That's much more a credit program and there's there's examples in the cities that I've looked at as well as others where there's a very specific um uh application that you use to apply for that credit. And there's also maintenance requirements for that. So those credits are time sensitive. They some cities allow them for a year or three years or five years and then they have to reapply. Which is which is very uh important for matters of stormwater management, because if you do not maintain your permeable pavers or your rain garden, it no longer functions as it was originally designed. So it's really critical to have those continue to be um evaluated on a reasonable timeframe. Uh so it's not just a given that you get this credit at the start of the program and then you've got it forever. Because that facility may not be in place forever.
Well, I can I can see that that's different from these other four things which are not sort of moving targets, if you want to look at it that way. But I still think that if we're going to offer that that there should be some reference to that in.
I agree. We create a section of requests for credit or a credit program and then detail.
If the answer is that the that the credit designing the specifics of the credit program can't be done as quickly as or implemented as quickly as this. That's okay, but then I still think if someone someone were to apply on that and it couldn't be figured out until next year, there should be a retroactive coverage to back to when the new fee structure is adopted, if this is adopted. So I I'm I'm I guess I'm suggesting three things. One is that the credit, the notion of the credit be built into this ordinance. Number two, that we made clear that that can't be done this year, that it could be retroactive. And then three, that people not be asked to do as much as we're asking them to do in C.
Councilor Kovar, on on the question about C, I I will check with the city attorney about some options. I think that there there may be some language that could be put in that there would be a determination by the city manager if you don't have to do all of the things. I mean, I can imagine a couple of places where someone can, you know, provide their their site plot, their their house plot um information. And that satisfies the answer. The fact is, there's going to be times when uh a survey would be required. And so maybe that there's a we make sure that it's it's clear that there could be an option for something less than that, but but there may be times when that still has to be required.
Well, and what what I suggested was, you know, contractor records, receipts or other documentation, there should, I mean those should at least be on the table as an option. And then maybe there could be a more complex case where the staff would say, no, you have to provide something beyond that. But the but the idea that 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 the entry level bar that they have to achieve is a certification by a registered engineer professional land surveyor. I just don't.
I understand that. I understand that, Councilmember Kovar. That's why I was suggesting that we add some language.
Yes, a and the reference that you made to um contractor receipts and things like that really really ties itself to the credit program and not to the correction program.
Well.
Because there wouldn't be contractor receipts for a square footage.
But if someone has built a if someone's built a driveway and is it is it a different size than than?
Right, so that'd be a square footage issue, which would, you know.
I I need to, I think we could figure this out. I think I I think we can. I think we know where we're going on this one. Um and it's I think in other ordinances, we have language that um provides some flexibility here. Um. So um is there anything else, Councilmember Kovar?
I just have a couple of other questions. One, in terms of the frequently asked questions, I assume if we saw some small things in there, we have questions about, we can just send those separately to the to the Public Works Director. Um the one other question. Two other questions. One, there was a talk about the cap, but I wasn't sure if the cap is the same as the phase in for the higher.
That's it, yeah.
Is that the same issue?
Hmm.
Okay, is that and then the one other thing is, I had discussed previously my interest in including this and and agreed to not propose it now, which is um some enhanced public meeting and other enhanced communications around bigger uh stormwater permits. And this is something that came up in the context uh at one point of Montgomery College and I think the Public Works Director indicated that was a lot to take on now. So I'm fine not proposing that this week or next week when we when we take this up. But I I would like to ask the mayor if that's something that we could get back to it.
Hmm.
Some other point.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and to your point, um Councilmember uh Kovar, I think um there may be other ordinance language changes we want to see in the stormwater code specific to development. Um particularly after the meeting that we had with Montgomery County. So I think there may be more than that that might be of interest to the council to strengthen and enhance our stormwater code that's specifically geared towards construction and redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilman Devalla, is that an old hand or a new hand? Old hand, thank you. Thanks. Um Councilman Cersei.
Um, thank you. Uh so I I just want to do two things really quickly. One um is to reiterate my support um to a statement that Councilmember Kovar made. Um, and I believe Councilmember Devalla as well, about making sure that the request, the process of requesting a correction is one that is simple and does not require a substantial amount of funds in order for someone to refute their cost. Um I think that can be a very um in addition to the change in the process and knowing that we we need to kind of correct the books or make sure the books are correct. Um, we we don't want to put residents at any undue financial strain coming out of a pandemic um as a result of this change. So I want to encourage us and reiterate the importance of doing that. Um, another thing that was discussed, um I if I remember correctly, and it is late, so I might not be. Um, is that we were um talking about capping the um actual stormwater fee. Um so those households that were above, I thought it was like two hundred and seventy-five.
Right.
Were we were capping that fee in order to allow us some time because most likely the folks that would be on that tail end are most likely going to be the folks to refute, you know, to kind of
Right.
want an adjustment. So so how does that piece fit?
All right, so let's just say, I think we've like talked about this.
It's late.
It's really late. That doesn't get written into the ordinance. It this is this is the I'm sorry, doesn't get written into the code. This is we're talking about the code changes and that one time capping and phasing in as we're putting this in, as the city manager said um a while ago, is a budgetary issue. Um as we're phasing in the project and we'll we'll put language in the adopting resolution on that.
Okay, okay, I'm 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 trying to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, no, it's okay. No, each of us have done the same thing. So it's good. You're all good.
All right.
I I think the staff understand the cap is really important to us.
Yeah. I think the cap is going to save us all. The cap is important to everyone because it requires time. Um, so, okay, no, that's helpful. And that that helps me out with understanding the full rollout of things that versus what's in the code versus the actual implementation. So as we're talking about that cap, that means when we roll stuff out, not only do people have that time before their actual tax bill is due, but it is very well possible that the amount that they are on the book for owing in the future is not necessarily what they will be responsible for paying during that first year because of the phases. So I I think that's a a piece, that's a weird piece when we're talking about implementation that will be important.
Councilmember Cersei, I think that, you know, I just made a note to myself that 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 has to be uh clearly indicated in the letter that gets sent out so that the folks recognize that, okay, it would go up in at at the subsequent year.
Right, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, Councilman Kostic.
Okay, I'll try to be very fast. Um, the first thing is, and I apologize if someone already said this, but B um here in the code says that a determination needs to be made in thirty days, and I just want to flag that as something that maybe needs to be a little longer for the first round. Um, since it might take longer to review multiple things. Um, the second is, and I don't need an answer right now um because it's very late, but just in thinking about the cap and also thinking about the credits. I I've been going back and wondering how that impacts our seven hundred thousand dollar goal of the total we're trying to achieve. So I I just wonder if that also impacts the fees that others are paying or how we offset that. So that's a bigger global question, but one I think we need to resolve before we adopt this.
Yeah, one of the things is it's difficult to know because we don't have any uh record uh except for properties that have been developed and had to meet certain stormwater permitting requirements and may have uh certain facilities within their property. Uh but that's a pretty short list relative to the number of houses exist already existing in the in the city. So we don't know how many people will apply for a credit. But I do share your concern that that will reduce the amount of revenue that we have, which could ultimately then shift the burden of those costs to the people who are basically on the lower end of the of the fee schedule potentially. So we could be increasing everybody's fee for the benefit of those that got credits.
But we don't know how by how much.
No, it's it's one of those things that I think we'll have to wait several years because I'm sure not everybody will submit their credit request the first year or the second or even the third until they finally get, you know, around to doing it and we'll have a better sense. And also, we may uh see some interest in it. It may trigger people to do work on their property, which is ultimately a good thing. Um, but we don't know yet what what that will be. And certainly, that's part of why with the credit program um uh we don't have language developed for that, but it wouldn't eliminate anyone's fee. They would still need to pay a significant portion of the fee because the infrastructure is there in the public right of way and in our, you know, outlets, inlets and pipes. So there will never be any, I've done so much that I I don't pay anything. Everyone needs to contribute to the continued uh maintenance and ongoing existence of the stormwater structure. Um, so, but we really are going to have to watch it.
I also say that um a a number of communities, uh including um some parts of the code for Montgomery County have a maximum amount. So it was kind of a first come, first served up to a maximum amount. I prefer not to do it that way, but um if if it is an issue about making sure that there's enough money to do the stormwater projects, that is an option.
So for now, you think that there's enough flexibility in the annual budget to be able to adjust for 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 the credits that might be in the first round? And then to see what that looks like next year?
Yeah, really have no idea. So we'll we'll find out once the applications come in and we may uh discover that people have done a lot of uh good things on their property to reduce stormwater runoff from their private property. In which case, you know, we'll be having to look at how we need to um maintain our revenue stream for the ongoing capital and maintenance program.
And this this um change on the on the fee structure does not lock in these fees. He still will set fees in your budget process. So at some point in the future, it may be, you know, thirty dollars per five hundred square feet or whatever it is.
Yeah, just like you currently set the base fee or previously set the base fee every year.
And can I just ask one more quick question? Um if we need at some point in time or decide that we want to offset some of the expenditures related to stormwater through property tax for one way or run one reason or another, maybe it was something focused more on private property, for example. We have the capacity to do that, right? It doesn't have to come through the stormwater fee.
And we can take it out of the general funds like we did last year, right?
We can do that. It's it it starts to undercut the concept of the program. And, you know, we really try to make sure that we don't do it through property tax because there's some non property tax paying entities that for which that's why we have the stormwater fees, a separate kind of a fee.
Actually, the offset, oh, sorry, the offset that we did for FY twenty-one was taken out of the stormwater fund, so it didn't come from the general.
Oh, it did. It did. Okay.
But we do have a an established uh reserve for stormwater that, you know, based on revenue that was earned but not spent. So there is at at last year's point, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars of existing stormwater uh balance, but that has been reduced based on what was done in FY twenty-one.
Yeah, I did think we put in fifty thousand dollars of general fund, but we can't. It's a little late. In in any, in any event, I think that the, you know, what's more useful is is to see what we can get in terms of grants and that kind of thing that go into the stormwater fund.
Hmm. Right.
I'm sorry, that that kind of goes into my question really quickly. Like, are we wedded to a credit versus some other approach to offer incentives for addressing stormwater on properties? So instead of, for example, giving a credit for a rain garden, we have some kind of program where you get some sort of reimbursement. But your stormwater fee is actually based, continues to be based on the amount of impervious surface that you have on your property. Does that make sense? Like, is is ongoing credit better than just a one time, thank you very much for doing something good for the environment? We're moving forward with the amount of impervious surface you have on your property.
Yeah, I think the the thing that's really nice about the credit um is that it is something that's ongoing and it's a commitment to making it work and to having it function as opposed to just a as as opposed to just a bonus. And so um obviously, you know, there could be some bonus program, but that ends up undercutting, I think, the purpose of the stormwater. You know, the really the clean water aspects of the stormwater system.
Yeah, also have the issue of the rebates itself. Uh, you know, similar to rain skates, um you know, that's seventy-five hundred dollars max per property, which is pretty significant dollars. Um whereas with credit programs, we're talking about ten, twenty, thirty percent off of your two hundred and fifty dollar bill. So a whole different range of price reduction than what is is uh looked at to make a rebate you know, attractive to someone. So it's a really different scale.
Um, Councilmember Smith?
I have just a a very quick question. Uh, Ms. Brayley, thank you for uh staying up late with us this evening. Uh, do will your department offer regular classes during the 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 year so that residents can uh understand how uh they can prevent stormwater runoff um from their property?
We could certainly look into um partnering with uh those organizations that do that type of work um similar to what we tried to do in the Flower Avenue Project early on with the workshops.
Right.
Um, we don't have the staff capacity to do training uh ourselves at this point uh with the current staffing, but there are organizations that that have that available and could do that and we could um, you know, similar to what we're doing with our tree workshops. Or you can hold uh stormwater workshops and partner with uh organizations that do that type of work on a regular basis. And uh make those workshops available to people.
I think that'd be an excellent idea. And one other piece, uh if we could uh maintain a record to see, you know, those people that went through the workshop. Uh if they actually did implement some type of change on their property. And those that didn't find out, try to dig in and find out why. It was it money? Was it, you know, they just didn't have time for it? Or, you know, see if there's a way that we can as a council or a future council can help incentivize people to to make the changes. But thank you very much.
Councilmember Kovar?
I just one last question that relates to what Councilmember Smith just talked about in a way. Could we also do as we do with the trees, I believe? You know, every couple of years have a, again, there will be a cost in staff for this, so I don't know, a training for contractors who provide Stormwater control services, because one of the things I hear about all the time from. Residents is how do we know who to hire to fix my basement or to fix the.
Hmm.
My yard that where water keeps pulling up. And I don't think we could certify anybody, but we could just say. Contractor so and so went through our bi-annual. Uh, process where they would at least be acquainted with our requirements. So that's something. That could be done too. I think that has some promise.
Yeah, I think that would be a really heavy lift, given our size. Um, however, we, we're blessed with Montgomery County having already done that for us. So they do have a certification program for contractors that have gone through their rain skapes program and they do maintain that list. And, and, um, it is, it's very clear what they've been certified in. So we're, we're lucky that we can certainly point people to that and rely on that because it is something that they have established. And, you know, they have a big enough scale, um, being countywide that they can attract the interest of. Contractors to go through their program. Whereas for the city, it would be very few contractors that would be. Interested in getting certified by the city for our 2.2 square miles, but the county's already done that for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. Um, so just to recap what I have in my notes, um. If I can read them, um, is that there are a couple of things that we talked about in the, um, authorizing resolution or whatever we call it. The adopting resolution, when we adopt the code changes. Is, um, specifying a cap for this year needs to be in that. Um, and also making sure that we have written out what the process is going to be. For this year, how people are going to receive a letter and the process for review and everything. Um, in the code language, we're going to review with the city attorney, um, section J, um, and most likely take out the clause. Um, uh, contracting with outside consultants, but we want to make sure the rest of that works. Um, Ms. Braithwaite is going to look at language in other, uh, city ordinances that do have a credit program and provide some like code language for that. Um. We're, um, we are going to, um, look at in the broader, in the resolution, we looked at earlier, adding language on the credit program that even though we can't institute that this year. Um, we'll do that in the future. And the final thing I had was another thing for the city attorney. Was looking at this section C here, um, and changing the language. That's all I have. Did I miss anything? Nope, okay. I think that's it and, um. We'll look at those things and hopefully be able to bring this back for a vote next week so that we can get the process moving. Um, all right, I think that's the last thing on our agenda tonight. Um, so unless somebody has something else they really want to get done. Um, we're going to call it an evening before it turns to the next day. So. Thank you everyone for all the hard work tonight and, uh, we'll see you soon. Good night. I like the peacock, very nice.